Okay, the board is reconvening from closed session and we will continue with our regular meeting tonight with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first item up is approval of minutes. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the September 8th, 2020 regular meeting of the Board of Education as presented.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the closed session of the September 8th, 2020 regular meeting of the Board of Education as presented.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Is there any public comment this evening? Okay, we will move on to the public hearing on the 2020-2021 budget. I call to order the public hearing regarding the proposed 2020-2021 budget.
Alright, good evening. I'm here to present the 2020-21 final budget. And first, we're gonna start out with our revenues by source. So property taxes for all funds are $24.9 million. You can see property taxes, whether it's for all funds or operating funds, which are the, which is the education fund, the transportation fund, operations and maintenance, IMRF, social security, and TORT funds is 85.33%. Other local sources are about 3.4%. State sources, 7%, and federal sources about 3 to 3.5%. So our total revenues for all funds, 29 million, and in the operating funds, 27.6 million dollars. So pictorially, again, you can see property taxes are the biggest source of our revenue. We get very little federal money, and that money comes in the form of grants. So that revenue we receive, we must spend that exact amount that we receive. So it allows us to do some additional things, but it does not supplant what we already are doing in our district. State sources includes evidence-based funding and a few of the other state grants. And then our local sources are things like our school fees and activity fees, book fees. Again, so all funds, again, property taxes are largest portion of our revenues. And you can, again, you can see pictorially how, what a big impact the taxes have on our revenues. Then the revenue assumptions built in the budget. The tax levy is based on the CPI of 1.9% for the 2019 levy and 2.3% for the 2020 levy. Interest income has been reduced from the prior year. Interest rates are at near zero, so this is a significant reduction to our revenues. Our grant funding is at our preliminary fiscal year '21 levels. Evidence-based funding, which is the money we receive for the state, this was, used to be what was called general state aid, is $1.3 million. It's the same as it was last year. And it doesn't increase by much. It's maybe, well, the year before it was maybe another $1,100. This was $1,100 more than the two years ago. So that doesn't change. See PPRT, so it's corporate personal property replacement taxes. They have been reduced based on estimates from the state, and that's because of business revenues have been decreased. Tuition fee income and rental income have also been adjusted downward for the anticipated impact of COVID-19. We have rental income in our O&amp;M fund, SACID rents classrooms. We still don't know what's gonna happen with the remote learning, if they're going to pay us, whether they're in person or not. So we're waiting on that, so that could be an additional impact to the reductions that we've already made. Medicaid reimbursement has been reduced, and our transportation fund revenue continues to be prorated. We receive about 80 to 83% of eligible expenditures. And the state revenue is estimated, because we don't have the FY '21 allocations. We won't get those until November-ish. So next, we look at our expenditures by object. So again, for all funds and the operating funds, salaries and benefits are our biggest expenditure. We're people business. So in the operating funds, it's just around, just under 71%. Purchased services are 11.65%. Supplies are very small portion of our budget. This year, I did put in contingency provisions because of all the unknowns with COVID and discussions that we had at previous board meetings, where we said we may need to hire additional staff as we go back into hybrid learning. I've put contingencies in the ed fund, the O&amp;M fund, and then the TORT, or not the TORT fund, but the IMRF social security, because some of those benefits would be related to hiring of people. So that if we do hire those positions, we have that money there. I did not want to go ahead and assume and put that money in salaries and other things, because it kind of skews the budget. It skews our ability to project going forward if we don't actually need those. So again, you can see the different categories in picture form by the operating funds and then all funds. Salaries are being negotiated for all of our unions right now. And salaries are at the FY '20 levels for the WTA admin and non-union staff. Retiree increases and the tentative agreements for WESPA and the WCMA are reflected in this budget. Medical insurance is budgeted at current rates for half the year and at a 5% increase for the remainder of the year. And then in the O&amp;M fund, we have expenditures included for repairs that were identified in the five-year capital plan, so we'll do some transfer of about $150,000 from the O&amp;M to the Capital Projects Fund. Also in the O&amp;M budget, we have some minor masonry work at South. We have a tractor with mower attachments that the board had approved. The concept of the purchase at previous meetings, and now we're bringing that to you later this evening to approve that purchase. And then transfers to the life safety, for life safety projects that will pay out of the Capital Projects Fund. Those will be additional life safety projects that we don't have enough money in the life safety fund to pay for. So we'll transfer money to the Capital Projects to pay for those. And then we also budgeted $50,000 for roof repairs in the O&amp;M fund. And then, right now, the O&amp;M fund has a healthy fund balance, but we are saving that money for the projects that we have to do to our facilities. So we're bringing you the building automation system replacement at the high school this evening to approve. And that money, we can use our working, remaining working cash bond funds. We need to use those up. That money can, is set aside for that. But we also have another very large project, which is HVAC work at the junior high, which is anywhere from $2 to $4 million. And so we'll obviously need some other financing sources for that, but that's why those funds in the O&amp;M fund are being reserved for some of these large maintenance projects. And then the Capital Projects Fund includes capital projects to utilize the remaining working cash bond funds. And then we'll be transferring funds from working cash to the O&amp;M, and then ultimately the Capital Projects Fund for that. Then the fire prevention and safety fund includes the expenditures for some of the items on the life safety survey and those that are associated with the school maintenance project grant. So again, this evening, you're going to be approving contracts with the architect for plumbing improvements at four of our buildings. Those were all part of our life safety survey. Those projects have to be done. And we were fortunate enough to receive a $50,000 matching grant that we will utilize to do some of those projects. The building budgets were cut 10%. And then other supply material counts were kept relatively flat. Contingency provisions that I talked about were budgeted for COVID-19 and for additional teaching and teaching assistant staff and a school nurse. And then there's also some contingency in the O&amp;M fund for cleaning supplies. The cleaning chemicals and things like that for the COVID-19 protocols are expensive. And we've been using our CARES grant money for that, but that will run out at some point. Alright, so I did two different things with the budget this year, so you can see. So I've got the revenues and expenditures by operating funds. So our revenues for the operating funds are $27.6 million. Our expenditures are $30.2 million roughly. So a deficit of two, almost $2.5 million. Now, this deficit has those contingencies in it. It has $1.1 million in the ed fund. It has $150,000 in the O&amp;M fund and $8,000 in IMRF and social security. If we don't need all those positions or have to do those things, we will look better than this. So, and then when it also goes in, we just look at the surplus or deficit in the debt service, which is the payments for our outstanding bond issues. Our capital projects, that deficit is fine. That's not a concern, because that's money that we are shifting from our O&amp;M to the capital projects. So it shows a deficit, because we don't really get revenues in there. Transfers don't count. So we'll be transferring money. And again, the fire prevention and safety, we have fund balance. We have to spend it on only those type of projects. We're utilizing and spending those monies down for the projects, which is what the money is there for. So I, this slide shows that original surplus deficit with the contingency built in, but then also I wanted to show you without the contingency. So in the ed fund, the deficit is $828,000 projected if we don't have to do all the extra hiring and we don't have any unexpected, you know, expenses. So I wanted to have that flexibility in our budget, but I also wanted to show you what it looks like if we don't need those, those expenditures. So operating funds total is $1.2 million deficit. And again, the restricted funds stays the same. So, and then, so you can see that, you know, there's, there's a lot of wiggle room. It also gives you an idea to see what no salary increases does to our budget as well. Then, just a little bit, and I'm not gonna go through all of this. I put in several slides. You can look at that later if you want to, about our evidence-based funding. But again, 1.325 million, it's allocated. We received that money based on our low-income student population, our English learner population, resources for special education, and then resources not specifically allocated. So you can see the breakdown there. And then the next few slides go through what we'll utilize that funding for. So employing licensed educators to provide instruction for our curriculum and learning tools, for innovative programming. We'll invest in infrastructure, capital, and other operations, et cetera. And so again, just some of the different things that we're going to provide to our students and constituents in the district. Then the next slides talk about the different ISB goals that we meet. And again, a lot of them are tied to percentages of students ready for college and career, that we have safer environments, we assess kindergartners. And then again, which percentage of students are at our grade level and what those goals are set by the state. Key considerations for the district, again, revenue projections are conservative. Expenditures are based on actions necessary to begin to reduce deficit spending in the education fund. The life safety and working cash spending for capital projects, the funds can only be used for those purposes. They can't be used to pay salaries. The education fund balance, also you need to keep in mind that $250,789 of that balance is from the Hackbrush donation that we received in last fiscal year. So that can only be spent on educational items for the high school, and that's not available for salaries or benefits or things like that, or for the other schools. The O&amp;M fund balance reflects $156,380 in TIF funds that can only be spent for improvements at Manning. The property tax freeze legislation is still pending, as is pension reform legislation. The long-term financial impact of COVID-19 is not known. I'm sure we're gonna continue to see lots of additional impacts as a result. The state of Illinois budget is in turmoil and will likely impact future funding. And there was a Tribune article, I think it was last week, where the headline says that Governor Pritzker asked state agencies to prepare for a nightmare scenario of budget cuts. So I think we all should be prepared for that same type of thing. The 2021 budget is aligned with board and district goals to provide educational services to the students and families we serve. And, you know, the district has a fund balance policy of 45%. So our education and TORT funds right now do not meet that 45% guideline. And the state's guideline is 25%. So our district is looking to have much healthier fund balances than what the state requires. That's a good thing for rainy days like now. So we have sufficient fund balance if we have to do that additional spending. But at some point, we can't continue in that trend. So we're at that point where we need to start looking at it and making changes to bring our fund balances back up to that healthy level that our board would like to see. So that's all I have for the presentation tonight. Does anybody? And one other thing I just wanted to mention too is that our revenues are driven off of CPI and property tax is the greatest source. One of the things, when we look at just the additional tax revenue that we receive, so from last year to this year, we received $574,000 additional tax revenue from the prior year. So that is allocated among all of our funds, and $436,000 of that went to the ed fund. And so when we start having salary increases that outpace that $436,000, that doesn't allow us to do any increases for materials. It doesn't include any of our outplace student tuition costs, any of the other operating expenses that we have. So that's one of the things that we need to start to address. The other thing that has impacted our district is the TIF. And so we, there's additional tax revenue that we don't receive each year. So for the 2019 levy, $319,000 of, goes, you know, toward the tip. That's EAV, that's tax revenue that we don't get, because all the properties in that TIF, now that revenue no longer comes to the district. So that's one of the other things that is contributing to some of our deficit spending, is we're not getting the same level of revenue that we've received in the past. Any questions?
I have some questions if nobody else does. So you mentioned that our fund balance is like a rainy day fund. I really like that analogy. So how many years, if this, if this budget were, this budget that we're planning for this year were to go as you forecasted, which I know is very conservative, how many years will we have run into a deficit or dipped into that rainy day fund this year?
So we're projecting a deficit for this, for FY '20 and the prior two years for sure.
So this will be our third year dipping into that?
FY '20 was year three. This would be year four.
So that's to your point about needing to slow that dip down. We, the two biggest deficits that we're gonna run for next year were the education and the transportation fund? So for the $400,000 of our transportation fund deficit, with COVID, is there a chance that we?
Well, we have sufficient fund balance in the transportation fund. And yes, it's, at this point, it's very difficult to predict what our transportation costs are going to be. We're in the process of negotiating, renegotiating contracts with our transportation providers, which I'll be bringing to you in October. So they are looking for some level of payment for the days where we're not transporting. And then obviously, you know, they're, so they're ready to go on October 5th when we're up and running. But obviously, there's some transportation we're not doing because of some of the athletic events and things like that. Difficult to predict exactly where we're gonna wind up. Now, the one thing you have to remember, we don't have the expense. Then our revenue goes down as well, because we've received reimbursement for the state for part of that. And the revenue we receive is always a year in arrears. So in FY '21, we're receiving revenue based off of FY '20 expenditures.
I see. I don't want to keep asking questions if other people have questions.
You've mentioned that the fund balance at 45% is the district's goal, and 55% was the state?
25 is the state.
So what are we, what are we at percentage-wise?
For the education fund and TORT? Those are two that don't meet the?
Yeah.
Alright, so the education fund is at 44.6% before contingencies and 38.13 with contingencies. And remember, this is on a cash basis. Our financials are on modified accrual, so they will look differently once the audit is finished.
You said 44.6 without contingencies, and what was it with?
38.13, and that's in the board memo about the budget that is posted in the board docs.
Thank you.
So for that, that contingency to kind of hone on the, I'm not just focused on the education fund, since it's our largest deficit and our lowest fund balance. Do we have, so the contingency includes the extra staff we might need to hire, correct?
Correct.
So, but we've already posted for those positions as the board had?
Well, yeah, but posting doesn't, doesn't equate to an actual hire. And I don't know what those salaries are going to be.
Okay.
And so again, to not skew our five-year projections, I don't want to put salaries in there, because everything drives off and it multiplies year after year. So if we do that, I can, we can go in when I'm running projections and allocate that money to salaries, allocate it to benefits in the exact amount that it needs to be, so that nothing skewed.
I really appreciate the contingencies, because it's good to know there's a huge deficit difference. And that's something we just can't predict. We can't predict how much cleaning supplies we're gonna need. We can't predict our sub-needs and how much it's gonna increase this year. So Kim, what are our options to reduce that education fund deficit? How can we correct those things? You said we need to start working on those and start focusing on those. So what are some of the things that we can do in education fund?
Well, obviously, when you look at that pie chart, and I'm sorry, didn't, when we go back to that, hold on. Okay, when we look at our expenditures, obviously salaries and benefits will have the greatest impact. When you look at our supplies and purchase services, they're a relatively small amount of our budget. We've already started to address that with budget cuts in those areas. But again, sometimes, you know, there's certain things that we need to be able to run and have our programs and that the building principals need for their staff. The tuition, outplace tuition is difficult. We really can't control populations and the needs there and what those increases come in at. So, you know, obviously, we need to start to, you know, I have a list of things. I don't know that this is the appropriate time to go through them.
Sure.
But there are definitely things that we can do to reduce some of our expenditures.
So one of those things would be, as we're negotiating, as you mentioned, we have contracts that are open. All of our employees' contracts are open. So we have the opportunity to really right the ship with salaries, with that 56.3% plus benefits in addition to that, which is really, really hard this year in particular, when we're asking our staff to do so much. And this is not the ideal year to teach. This is not the ideal year to be in education at all. It's, it's a hard, it's a hard ask. But I think it's something that we as a board really need to consider, doing some hard things. This is certainly not our staff's fault that we're in, the deficit that we're in. It is what it is, and COVID can make it worse, in particular this year. But part of our job as a board is to be responsible for the long haul, for the financial long haul of our district. And I think that's gonna mean having some really serious conversations, unfortunately, about salaries as we do our contract negotiations.
Can you help me understand what happens besides we break up more debt? What happens when we run out of those funds? What happens, like, is there, does this, what happens when we, when we're in a deficit of $2 million for X number of years and, and then we, we run out of funds? What?
Well, first of all, I would try not to let that happen.
Yeah.
I'm a very conservative spender, so, you know, this, you know, I like, I like rainy day funds, because you never know when something's gonna happen. We're fortunate enough to have fund balance, so that we can weather a short-term, a one-year storm if we need to. But again, we need to start doing things to, to right that process. And that's gonna mean that people are gonna have to make some sacrifices, and we're gonna have to really look at our spending and make some tough decisions and maybe put down some really tough guidelines going forward. If you look at the state budget form, I know there's, you know, I don't know, more than 30, maybe 60 pages in that form, but there is a section that has a chart in it that tells what the fund balances are. And the state has a different definition of operating funds than the PMA projections that we use for our five-year plan. So if your revenues and expenditures are out of line with your fund balance, it'll tell you, like, right now, we have an unbalanced budget, because our expenditures exceed our revenues, but we do not need a deficit reduction plan. When that fund balance ratio hits 25%, that's when you have to start filling out all the documentation, including in that, in that state budget form, that tells the state how you're, what you're going to do, what steps you're gonna take to try and right the ship. So we don't ever want to get to that point, and so that's why we're looking to do things now, so that we don't get there. But at some point, the state requires you to. But at some point, the state, uh, requires you to make changes.
And Kim, just to, this is Laura, um, just for the, everyone watching. Um, when we get to that point, which hopefully we do not, but if we were to get to that point, do we, um, lose some control over what decisions are made? I mean, obviously, if the state is reviewing our, our plans, um, it feels to me like we have less influence over what, what we actually get to decide to do and, and therefore that becomes a, a bit of a scary scenario. Is that correct?
Well, yeah, you, I mean, you'd have to be really, you know, far out of bounds. And again, if you got to that point, I wouldn't be here. 'Cause that's, uh, 'cause I wouldn't let you, I wouldn't work for someplace that gets to that point. So, you know, if the board isn't, and people aren't on board to make those changes, then I won't be around to manage that.
Right. I guess the point I'm trying to make is, um, the same point I think Mrs. Strohmeyer was making, which is this, we are, we're at a, in a situation that we need to address this. And, um, it's not going to be easy to address. And, um, obviously, we're gonna have to have some, some tough conversations, but we really wanna underscore the importance of the decisions that we need to make so that, you know, we don't end up in that situation.
Correct.
Yeah, I, I wanted to understand kind of short and long-term consequences for kind of continuing to kick the bucket, if you will, down the road, right? Like, if we kick this button, bucket for another couple of years, or, ah, we're $2 million, $1.5 million, like, you know, is there a point where, like, the state says, okay, you get, you gotta stop this, and we start losing control?
Well, yes, if you, if you have that twenty-five percent and you have to do the deficit reduction plan and you don't start actually making changes, then at some point, the state would come in.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else?
Okay, are there any additional comments from members of the board regarding the proposed 2020, 2021 budget? Are there any public comments concerning the proposed twenty, 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 twenty-one budget? I declare that the public hearing on the proposed twenty, 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 twenty-one budget is closed. The next item on our agenda is the consent agenda. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. Number one, personnel recommendations. Emily Glombuski, uh, teaching assistant Manning School. Um, Robin Palermo, teaching assistant Manning. Uh, Mariah Beralis, teaching assistant Manning School. Megan Kirkwood, art teacher, Westmont Junior High School. Increase in FTE from point five to one point oh. Ryan Patterson, varsity girls' basketball coach, Westmont High School. Uh, Lauren Manessis, volunteer cheerleading coach, Westmont High School. Uh, number two, policy second reading. Number three, approval of September twenty twenty expenditure report. Number four, ratification of August twenty twenty regular payroll. And number five, disposal of Kubota Tractor. Uh, are there any? Well, I made a, uh, asked for a motion.
No, don't you read them all?
I did.
No, it's consent-
Am I missing something?
The consent agenda, don't you continue on? Did you, I'm sorry, did you read them all?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
Some of-
Number five.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
For the art teacher, um, FTE increase for the junior high, will that negatively affect, I know we've been having some ongoing conversations about the band instructor? Okay.
No, no.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion, uh, and I need a second.
Second.
Are there any further questions, comments, anything about the consent agenda? Okay, can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Armstrong?
Yes.
Ms. Conover?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Ms. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Redonia?
Yes.
Ms. Coyle?
Yes.
Mrs. Strohmeyer?
Yes.
Okay, we'll move on to information and discussion items. The first one is student engagement report and student academic progress update.
And included in the, uh, board book, the board had asked, uh, information on student engagement. And so each of the buildings put together, um, some information regarding student engagement. As you can see, um, it is, uh, very high across the district with kindergarten, first grade being at ninety-seven percent. And then, uh, in that same table is the high school ninety-eight, or the junior high ninety-eight for sixth grade, ninety-eight for seventh grade, and ninety-four for the eighth grade. And then at, uh, Manning, second grade is at ninety-four percent. All the other grade levels are at ninety-eight percent. And then the, uh, junior high is running ninety-four percent for sixth grade, ninety-one percent for seventh grade, and eighty-eight percent for eighth grade. And then the high school is totaling about eighty-seven percent. So overall, if you compare that to the spring, it's much better than what we experienced in the spring. And the, um, the, the schools are still, uh, doing their assessments for academic progress. The one challenge that, um, I think everybody can understand, typically those assessments are given in the classroom. And so, uh, when you have a student who's maybe racing through the exam, the teacher or teaching assistant can kind of slow the student down so that they spend a little bit more time on it. Um, in some cases, uh, there's one, uh, case that a student at a, I think it was kindergarten, first grade, really had a very high reading score. And, uh, you know, there's, you know, so then you question whether or not is that the student who's doing the work? And so there's some, some challenges. And so, um, it's difficult to, to definitely say that some of the gaps are due to what occurred in the spring. Plus, there's always a little bit of a drop-off after summer. But, uh, as we transition to hybrid and then as we're giving different assessments, um, when the students are in person, we'll be able to definitely narrow that down. But even with the results we're getting, the teachers are still able to adjust the curriculum for the students and where they're at so that we're closing those gaps. Um, I think, uh, and we don't need to go down this path today, but, uh, depending upon how long we have this impact with COVID-nineteen on the district, um, it could really reshape how we look at education, look at school. And, uh, if we kinda get away from that faculty model of you're a certain age, therefore, this is the content, um, that you're learning. Um, I think there could really be some, some conversations around that, uh, depending upon, again, how long we have this impact from COVID-nineteen. And we do have the principals there. They're here actually for the hybrid conversation, but they're here to answer questions regarding the achievement or student engagement as well.
I have two quick questions. Um, just the first one, for the kindergarten and first grade, it just says NA for the on-level fall reading. Um, have they not done assessments yet, or, um? Why does it say NA instead of a percentage for on-level for first grade reading?
Is that an iReady reference?
Um, I, I assume that's where it would come from. It's from iReady, and I know they did some diagnostic testing, so-
Engagement, but you, you didn't have your data yet from the iReady.
Uh, yeah, we still have, um, we still have four students in first grade that are taking iReady and then probably like twenty-two kindergarters. They, they started a week later.
Oh, we would not have, uh, oh, I'm just trying to- we would not have, um, any reading and math data for kindergarten 'cause it's their first time-
Right.
-they're taking it. But first grade took the iReady assessment in the fall and the winter, and we did not give it in the spring, uh, at both Miller and Manning last year. So as kindergartners, we just have two data points on those students. And then also, we do, um, a bigger battery of reading assessment, fonde de finale testing, and that also has not been done during the, since March.
Oh, got it. Okay, so this is not, I, I guess I was wondering if this would be like the diagnostic results from the iReady for the first graders, but it's, you know?
I don't, uh, I don't know if you wanna per, show what you're looking at up on the screen? I don't, I don't have access to that.
It was just the student engagement and progress table, um, and it's not a huge deal. I'm just kind of curious, um, to see where the-
No, so if, uh, Mr. Carey was saying that we didn't have our, uh, data in, our first grade engagement is at, um, eighty-three percent, uh, of our students are either in Zoom, taking, are part of the attendance during the mornings synchronous time, as well as participating in morning check-ins for the, uh, how they're feeling and how they're doing and how they slept the night before. Uh, it's our morning check-in, and then, um, the work that they are uploading on to their CSO account. And then kindergarten is a little bit higher. They're at ninety percent. Again, that, um, includes students that are attending Zooms and participating, completing their work, uh, that's being assigned in the afternoon. And then that work is, uh, we're still working on the metrics of that, but we're looking at, uh, one writing assignment with feedback each week as well as, um, a daily reading and math assignment that's done again through CSO. So our numbers are eighty-three percent fully engaged in firsts, ninety percent fully engaged in kindergarten. And then about ten out of sixteen students are partially engaged, so they're not choosing to do the Zoom because it doesn't fit their family lifestyle or their parents can't assist at home, but they are getting, uh, their assignments done. So they're watching videos. And then the same thing with kindergarten. We have six of nine students that are not attending Zoom, but they are participating in the CSO activities and, um, saying they're watching the recorded sessions at four o'clock.
Thank you. That's really helpful. Um, I did, I was looking at something else, I think, that had some different numbers, so I appreciate that. Um, and then just my other question, um, regarding student engagement is, um, for all of the levels, just what some of the steps have been taken to check in on those kiddos who are not engaged and what you are finding is the primary reason for non-engagement right now?
Oh, okay. One, one grade, did you wanna go up? We can start with the lower levels, if you like this.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Um, we are definitely finding a correlation with the students that are not in the morning Zoom meetings, um, the schedule with parents at home or the number of students that are in the household that are on Zoom and active in their learning, uh, just isn't the good fit. So we are working with, um, we've done home visits, we've reached out. We're try, we're really trying to make sure our recorded sessions and reading, math. And, uh, we have a couple programs that we're facilitating and reporting daily with, with Jotinics and, uh, or Edgar D. The name is awareness lessons. We're trying real hard on making sure they're all in Otis. So families who do have a choice about the recording and then still get their activities done. But we're, we're reaching out, and next week we have another, um, student at risk data team meeting to talk about how we're gonna bring some of those students in for some afternoon engagement if the parents are, um, or with students coming in the afternoon.
So for Manning Elementary, uh, very similar in terms of, it would be the same that meets weekly. Uh, in the first couple of weeks, we've really tackled participants for young learners. It's not just getting the students on board and online, but parents as well. And so in moving forward, we, we said we need to look at more data beyond just showing up or reaching out to parents. So in our report cards for both Manning and Miller, since we've moved to standard-based grading, we have a section called learner habits that really takes apart from the content, how a student is able to succeed in their learning using tools outside of content knowledge. And so I think Tim came up with the idea, and then we kinda fleshed it out with our instructional coach to look at those learner habits that set students up for learning, and they all directly tie to engagement. So talking about can they transition appropriately? Can they demonstrate self-control in a Zoom? Um, do they know how to stay organized in this remote setting? So now we're looking at how do we translate all those things into remote or hybrid? And then using that to report in Otis on a weekly basis will really give us more quantitative data rather than qualitative, you know, we see them in front of our Zoom. Do we know they're listening? Am I good? Now people can hear me.
Yep.
That's it.
And in regards to the junior high school?
We good? Okay. In regards to the junior high school?
We have a data team also that-
On a weekly basis, we have a really cool flow chart that shows how the process works.
But our teacher, here regardless of whether a student is at risk or not, is doing a weekly check-in with every single student by grade level. And in regards to whether it's an academic, a social emotional, whether it's attendance issue. So we identify these different hot topic issues of concerns in regards to, uh, the engagement piece.
Um, you actually, uh, may have it in your board docs, a, a tie into that tier one roster that we have. And, and so, so we meet as that data team first. We discuss those students. Additionally, teachers will be notifying, they'll be contacting home. We'll do home visits as well, depending on what the situation is. Sometimes it may be due to poor internet coverage or, or, um, you know, we, we know that there's a lot of these COVID-nineteen interruptions to learning that are going on. So we try to identify, wh- what's the source of the problem first and then work with that parent to alleviate that. Sometimes it comes down to conversation. Sometimes parents are going up to Wisconsin and the student hasn't logged in for enough, uh, enough time.
Um, but whatever that is, that's what we do. Additionally, besides that traffic sheet that I shared with you, we have another form that our teachers are able to utilize so that if, um, if, if we need to identify something, we're not necessarily looking at trend data over time, but we need to get help right away for a student, they have access to that form. And those, that's what we're looking at for problem solving. Besides the data team, we also have a problem-solving team.
So a couple of different ways, and, uh, and then I believe you have access to how a student is determined to be unengaged and why that percentage is what it is for the junior-
Thanks, Jeremy. Hi, everybody. Uh, once again, we have our data team that looks at every single student who's struggling, and then we have every intervention necessary to find out, problem solve. And that includes home visits. Uh, we've had some in-person meetings with students and parents. We've had some Zoom meetings, some phone calls. Uh, sometimes it's a technology issue. Sometimes it's lack of student motivation because they don't wanna follow through when they're not being held accountable, and the relationship piece is not as strong when we're going over the internet. Uh, but I believe there isn't a student in our building who we're not on top of, but some of them are not progressing the way we want them to, but we will continue to follow through with them.
I have a question, um, a couple of questions. I'm looking at the, I guess, the, um, on-grade level, um, numbers, like, right now, I'm looking at the junior high. Um, these percentages of students on grade level, like, what is, how do we look at that? What is, what are these numbers? Are these good numbers? Are these goals? Like, what, I mean, of course, I'd like to see a hundred percent, but, but how do we grade ourselves with that?
Thanks, Ms. Hoover. So in regards to iReady, iReady has changed how they report out. So it used to be in three categories. Um, now it is to five categories. So there's a, there's a slight change in how we're reading the data from last year to this year. And my, my, uh, my comrades here, they, they're a little more used to iReady than I am, but I'm learning quickly. So we've noticed that in all, all three grade levels for reading, it seemed like, based on those percentages that you have before you, that more students are on grade level than previously in regards to the fall. Uh, however, there's a signa-, and for reading specifically. Uh, math, I believe it's, uh, two grade levels, sixth grade and eighth grade, if I'm remembering the data correctly, that are hi-, that are higher than last year's percentages as well, that are on grade level. Um, but, but seventh grade, uh, there's a little bit, it's a little bit closer, right?
Right.
Um, additionally, what, what we saw with the data is that there's, uh, there's more students, just like there's more students that are at grade level, um, a higher percentage. There's, there's more students that are two or three grade levels below. And, and so, uh, you're kinda wondering what happened there. Well, the middle shifted to the, to, to the left and the right a little bit in regards to the percentages. So in regards to looking at that data, we're concerned. Uh, we're, we're happy that more students are at grade level, but we're very concerned with that shift, uh, that we have students that are two to three grade levels below. That's a big concern for us. And so, um, we have, through iReady, there's something called the personalized pathway, and that is one of the ways that students at home, parents can, can help their students too. Um, they, that personalized pathway is in tune with that specific student and what those skill deficit areas are. And so that is one way to- skill deficit areas are, and so that is one way to address it. Of course, uh we are looking at that data, the the teachers as well, along with our instructional coach, and providing PD for our teachers, and how we can inform our own instruction to meet the needs of the students in classroom, not just with a computer-based process, you know, the the program that we have through the personalized pathway. Um iReady, or Curriculum Associates or iReady, they suggest that a student do forty-five minutes in reading and forty-five minutes in math to help build that. That's that research-based um uh intervention that they have in place. But those are concerns for us. Did I address your question?
Yes.
Okay.
Can I ask a follow-up question? So don't move. Yes. Um for junior high, the numbers, if you're looking at these numbers for the first time, I think, where students on grade level can look very low, you know, looking at, for example, thirty-eight percent of our students are at grade level for math in seventh grade.
Correct, that's the lowest, I believe.
That's the lowest. But I I know that looking across at other junior highs, so I think what's the norms as far as, you know, what's the norms for area of students for other junior high or middle schools?
Great question, great question.
Yeah, just to help us understand, what does that percentage mean? Does that mean that the rest of the students are failing, are gonna be held back? What does that mean?
No, I I, so I'm not gonna make excuses. Uh I, we we have students that have significant needs, that we need to make sure that we're building those deficits up, okay? That's that's number one. I was I was just on a Zoom call with about twelve different principals from the area prior to this, and they were all asking, have you done the MAP NWEA testing yet? The reality is that we changed our benchmark, our diagnostic to iReady, the majority of the schools around us are still using M MAP NWEA. And so there's not many schools out there that I'm aware of that I can say apples to apples, this is the answer to your question, Dana. Um so so I can't tell you that. Uh the, in regards to M MAP WNEA, uh you would find that if, that we would see that a norm, sometimes we had forty-six percent of our students, somewhere between thirty-four to forty-six percent of our students were were in the were in the green, um which would be kind of what what we're looking at there, the data you're looking at there. So it is comparable, but two different diagnostic assessments, and so I I would probably get shouted at by my peers if I tried to say that they're the same thing.
Are the, are, have we generally been around the norm?
Yes, we have.
For for when we were doing MAP?
Yes, we we have.
Is is that, I know that we were talking about schedule changes for the junior high, in particular to increase math instruction time?
Yes, that's correct.
Was there, was was the students at grade level? I know we're focusing on how remote affects our numbers, but I'm, I guess I'm trying to take a step back and look at broader strategies. So was that part of the reason why we increased math instructional time? Was how we were scoring of how many students were reaching grade level on MAP in the past?
So it it wasn't necessarily just MAP, it was multiple data points. MAP was one of them, another was the IAR, because that is something that even though we've gone to um to the iReady assessment, uh the IAR, the Illinois Assessment for Readiness, this is the state test that we take, that was something that if you go on to the state report card, and you get in there for the the school, Westmont Junior High School, and and you look at the data, we're still pretty strong, but I believe that that's an area that we can strengthen. Uh we were strong in reading uh for like schools, we were actually pretty high for reading in like schools, and we were up, I'd say, in the top ten percent in regards to our socioeconomic status for mathematics, but there's a little bit of room for growth. I always like to to, you know, just beat our neighbors from the south of the tracks to the to the east to the west, just a little bit, right?
Thank you for helping us understand that.
Sure.
Okay, are there any additional questions on that topic? Okay, we'll move to the next discussion item, which is update on twenty 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 twenty-one school year.
And so um this evening, I'm gonna uh present for the board, kind of again, the process we've been working through. I asked the principals to be here this evening so that they can uh share with the board any changes that they've made to their hybrid model since um, I think it was July, August, that we presented the initial ones. Uh but I first want to begin by, you know, thanking the principals and Linda Cloudwood, our Director of Special Services, for everything they've been doing last spring, this summer, this fall, um in uh helping our buildings get ready for remote learning, and now when we're talking hybrid, and and uh these are very caring, passionate administrators, and um, you know, they want the best for our school community, and and they've been doing a great job this year. Just to kind of, I always like to to start with um just reviewing, uh you know, I don't want to assume that people have been paying attention to our board meetings all along and know exactly what uh we're discussing and and what's been happening, but again, uh the Restore Illinois Plan that the governor put out, um currently Illinois is in phase four, um and so this essentially is some of the drivers that impact what we can do as a school and and some of the things that we can do with it with our buildings. But again, currently, we're limited to groups of fifty, social distancing, face coverings, and um the schools are to look to the Illinois Department of Public Health, their guidelines for school opening. Phase five, that's when, if you think of normal school, what was like last fall, that's phase five, and phase five will occur when there is a vaccine available, effective treatment is widely available, or no new cases over sustained period of time, which, depending upon who you're listening to, the vaccine could be very close, or it could be sometime later in twenty twenty-one. Um but the reality is, um we'll be operating in phase four for this school year. You know, I think that's a a fair prediction, and uh depending upon what's going on in our region ultimately depends, determines what we can do with our our school plans. As a district, all along, since we began planning last spring and over the summer, um we've had our guiding principals, and so first and foremost, for first and foremost, it's the health and safety of all our students and staff. We want to make sure that our academic programming is meaningful and engaging, we acknowledge that we need to address the social emotional needs of our students, um providing consistency and stability for our students and staff, and that's one of the reasons why we started with the remote schedule, is because we wanted to establish that consistency and stability. And then um we've been providing ongoing professional development for our staff, and that's gonna continue throughout the year. Again, um uh it's been uh almost a month now, maybe, that the um DuPage County Public Health, uh they took the IDPH, and they kind of, we we, the superintends, we kept asking DuPage, the DuPage County Health Department to kind of help us with some metrics, you know, because we want to know, when is it safe to open schools, and what metrics should be we be be looking at? And so they uh developed this, um it's based upon, again, the Illinois Department of Public Health data that's provided every week, and they came up with three categories, which is a little bit different than the state of Illinois. If you remember, DuPage County was blue, and then we went orange, and now we go back to blue. Uh so the, for schools, we actually have three different levels. We have yellow, which is minimal transmission, moderate, which is um orange, and then red, substantial, and there's various metrics that we look at on a weekly basis. Usually, uh Friday, the school districts, we kind of get a heads up as to what's happening and and where they think it's gonna end up, and then Monday, they release it publicly so that you can find what the um the current status is. This is what was released yesterday by DuPage County Public Health. Um if you've been following, each week I share this information, and uh it looks a little bit better than last week. It seems like um with these metrics, if you uh know the game whack-a-mole, that's what it seems like is happening with the metrics, because um your test positivity might go down a little, but then it seems like the cases per one hundred thousand goes up. And those are probably the two ones that we're watching the closest and are most critical. And so um the way this works is if any one of those metrics is moderate, then for the county, and what is uh communicated to the school districts is that we're at the moderate level. Same thing will happen if one of those metrics hits red or substantial. Then the message to the school districts will be that we're at the substantial level of transmission, and it would be red. Again, the two ones that were, the two that we're most concerned about is the cases per one hundred thousand. That did dip a little bit, we were at eighty-nine a week ago, seventy-five now, um but the positivity um increased from four point, four point eight to five point seven. And so, again, this Friday, schools will, the superintends will give a a little bit of insight into it, and then on Monday, they'll reduce, release the new metrics. So this is one, and I'll I'll reference this again. Again, um back, I think it was August fourth, our August fourth board meeting, we talked about our plan, how we planned to phase it in. And so uh the first phase, we had all of our students for the first couple of weeks of the school year, they were a hundred percent remote. The next two weeks, we were bringing small groups in on Tuesday and Thursday. This current week, we're now upping that a little bit, increasing some of the the number of students, and then also increasing the number of days. And then our target is October fifth, that we would resume a a hybrid in-person learning um with Wednesday again being kind of that day when um we can do some some deep cleaning of our of our schools. The one thing I want to point out, and again, this is the credit to our our staff and our our administrators, um I've got another table that will show you kind of where other districts are at and what their plans are, and um many districts, uh this week or next week is the first time that they're gonna start bringing the small groups in, and we've been doing it for a couple of weeks and and successfully. So again, that's a credit to our our staff, our administrators, that we were able to to make that happen and and do it safely. This is kind of where everybody's at, and you'll notice a lot of TBDs, especially the high school districts, because high school is a, it's just a different animal, because again, one of the things that um we have to be cognizant of is that close contact, and that close contact is defined as being within six feet for fifteen minutes, but it's cumulative. So, you know, um already with high schools and and passing periods and and different things, you have to be a little bit worried about that. Um the other thing is, if you can keep cohorts together, which at the elementary level, a class is a cohort, so that classroom, those kids are together all day long. Um a high school and a junior high, a bell rings, and now you have cohorts mixing. And so when it comes down to contact tracing, because if we do have a positive case, and I'll say this a couple of times, we will have positive cases, our district has already had positive cases, um we will have positive cases, and the critical piece is gonna be contact tracing, and identifying who's had close contact and who needs to quarantine. And when you have students who are, every class period, they're with a different group of students throughout the day, and then you have to think to two, possibly three days earlier, trying to identify all those close contacts ends up being being a challenge. Um right now, District Eighty-Eight, they're, uh they haven't set a date, but I I know that they're leaning towards the semester, that they would stay remote. Uh Glenbarr Eighty-Seven is eyeballing the end of October. The other districts haven't set dates yet. A lot of school districts, um it seems like we're all on the same board calendar, we're all having meetings this week, maybe next week, and this is the conversation, you know? So in some cases, at those board meetings, they'll be discussing with the board possible timelines, and then they will become public. Uh Fenton again is looking at the second semester to to go hybrid. Lake Park, uh they're doing something interesting. Uh they haven't have a, they don't have a date for hybrid, but this week they started, any student who wanted to come on campus could come on campus to do their remote learning. So they weren't going to, you know, go to their normal class with their normal teacher, they'd be socially distanced throughout the the building and on the school grounds, um just for a little bit of a change of atmosphere, maybe possibly to help with Wi-Fi issues. Um Wheaton Two Hundred, their elementary schools are already in, and they're currently discussing when they start the junior high and high school um in a hybrid model. Lyle is targeting the end of October. Um it's Naperville and Indian Prairie is also, uh Naperville is as well. They haven't um identified a date yet, but um if you're following the news, there's a lot of pressure in those communities for those school districts to transition, so they're working on that. Elmhurst Two Oh Five, their plan's a little bit different than ours, they're phasing in the the elementary, the junior high, but by October fifth, they'll have, pre-K through twelve will be in a hybrid model. And all these, every district's looking at the same thing we are in terms of, well, we we are required to have a remote option, but then a hybrid um option where it's typically a partial day, or a reduced number of students in the building at a time. And then Markers targeting October sixth, Burridge, Hisdale A One are already in a hybrid. Um Butler, Darian, Woodridge, they haven't set their dates yet, and Center Cass is already in a hybrid model. So that kind of tells you what other districts are looking at. If you remember, one of the challenges when I talked to the board in August was um concern from the WTA and their comfort level with with being in person, uh without certain safeguards in place, and this is a survey that the WTA did. Um first of all, fifty-four responses, we have a hundred twenty-six teachers, so it kind of gives you an idea of, you know, it's not, um half the staff didn't respond, but this is their survey. What's missing off of this, and I apologize, I uh was taking, I can't even remember, is it a, take a snapshot of it? And uh I cut off, um but it would be left to right, one, two, three, four, five. One being very comfortable, five being very uncomfortable in terms of uh moving to a a hybrid model um with the students in the building. And you can kind of see that uh definitely the comfort level of the staff is higher than it was in the fall or in August. This was another question that they asked, um this gets back to, if you remember, we um did a survey of the staff, and if they had a a qualifying condition that they would need to possibly be remote, well, again, not every teacher responded to that. And so the concern from the WTA was possibly, would teachers, now that we were seriously considering hybrid and in person, would that increase their anxiety, and would we start to receive more requests for um making accommodations or possibly remote? And uh as you can see, again, most staff, again, it's not to say that they're a hundred percent comfortable, but I would say that their anxiety is is better than it was in August. And then the final survey, um this gets to that question about, uh one of the challenges is if you have students remote, students in person, and uh, you know, how how is the teacher working with both groups of students? And um this whole idea that uh there was concern about the students at home possibly um recording things and posting posting social media and and different things. And again, this kind of gives you their comfort level, that most uh of the staff um are comfortable with the idea that, yes, you know, they can have students on Zoom while they're working with students in the classroom, and so um they're more comfortable with it, with that happening, um which I I, again, I think bodes well. What I want to do now is uh let each of the principals tell you a little bit about their hybrid plan. Um I'll be honest with you. Um, I'll be honest with you, um, for Tim at Miller, Lindsay at Manning, for Jack at the high school, not much has changed. So, they're probably going to share just very briefly. John though had to really, um, make some modifications to his plan based upon, again, some of the things we're hearing from IDPH and, and the whole cohort, cohort concept. So his portion's going to be a little bit longer, but then, um, I do have a couple more slides, but then we'll obviously entertain your questions. So Tim, if you want to.
All right. So we presented, uh, earlier in the summer, and we didn't have a couple of things firmed up. And, uh, some of the major changes are that, um, Ms. Peterszak and I have firmed up our start and end times. So, um, we have confirmed that our students will be sharing buses from their bus stop. Uh, all K-five students will be, um, sharing the bus to and from school. And our arrival at Miller will be around eight fifteen. Our, our students will get dropped off second in the morning. So the K-one students would get on the bus with their, um, second through fifth grade peers in their neighborhood. The bus would then, uh, drive over to Manning, drop students off at Manning in second through fifth grade. Our students would stay on the bus, and then they would get dropped off second. And then we would be welcoming them and having our morning routine starting at eight fifteen. And our morning day for teaching and learning would start at eight thirty. And then we would kind of do the reverse, uh, where we've kind of built in a cushion for students to leave the building safely in an orderly fashion, following very strict, uh, procedures and protocols. Our, our school day educationally will end at eleven thirty, but we'll start loading the buses and parents would be, uh, going to the pickup area at eleven forty-five. So it gives us fifteen minutes on the front and back end where we can make sure students, uh, get in and out of the building appropriately. We would still, now that we know, um, we, we did a great job the first two weeks of school, having teachers reach out to all of our first graders and kindergarten families. And they, uh, confirmed in that time their choice for long-term remote plan, you know, uh, if we were, it's a first semester, uh, decision where you're committing to being in remote, um, learning for the whole semester. So we, we narrowed down, uh, that we only would need one kindergarten classroom remotely with, um, fifteen or less students in that class. So, uh, a very small percentage of our, our kindergarten families are choosing the remote-only option. They all know that they can always move to it, uh, from the in-person model. They can always go into, uh, remote if they're feeling not uncomfortable or if something happens and changes in their family, but, um, the reverse can't happen. So you can't start in remote and then elect to be in the in-person model because we've designed our whole, uh, model out of trying to keep our class sizes at fourteen or less. So we have seven kindergarten classrooms that will be in-person, and one teacher will be, um, orchestrating and facilitating the remote-only option for those fourteen or fewer students. First grade, same, except, uh, we have a higher number. Well, first of all, we have, um, about ten more first graders in our, in the school, a hundred and one first graders and ninety kindergarteners. We have a couple more first graders that elected remote. It's at sixteen right now. Of the sixteen, three, um, indicated that they, they are remote now, but once we have in school, they want to get into a classroom, so they have a seat saved in those classrooms. So, um, they just said the, the Zoom calls in the morning are just not for us, so we don't want to take up a seat in a class where teachers trying to get a hold of those three kids every day. So they're doing the remote-only kind of asynchronously. And again, seven classes, uh, in school, and then one of those teachers will be, um, facilitating the remote-only option for first grade. We finally got everyone, uh, our families, students, teachers, uh, up and running with the Seesaw application. So I know the second grade through eighth grade is using Otis. As, and, and second grade's also using, um, part of, parts of Seesaw that are, um, it's a learning platform. And our students are getting everything from their morning Zoom link to their math assignment, their reading assignment. Any feedback from the teachers are all now navigating and going through the Seesaw platform, which is great. Teachers are really loving that part. Another change is that, uh, we were advocating for a Monday through Friday schedule for our kiddos, just because it was half-day. We are committed to, uh, making Wednesday that day where we're going to focus on the teacher work areas and the, and the areas that students are in. So it'll be a remote-only day for our K-one kiddos, um, building-wide. So that day will, will not change, and we're still having conversations on what that looks like for the kids that are in school. Uh, the timing of that, because right now we're currently at nine to eleven thirty. Uh, we're pretty much live nine to eleven thirty with two ten-to-fifteen minute breaks with the kids. The teachers kind of made a, uh, we had a staff meeting today. They, they made a couple of statements on, we would like to keep that time as consistent as possible. So, um, we're looking at the start time on that Wednesday for all the kids. If it's going to be eight thirty, like the Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, or are we going to go back to what we're doing right now, which is nine o'clock? So that might be, um, that's something that we're going to tease out and make sure we clearly communicate moving forward. And then the last part is, we will, the other, the main change is that, uh, we will be asking three groups of kiddos to stay in the building based on, um, our at-risk students. Students that, uh, would possibly qualify for our emergent bilingual or ELL services, as well as our students with IEPs that, um, meet with our social worker, our speech pathologist, and our two special ed teachers. With, that's currently our small cohort of kids that come in Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday right now from one to two forty-five. So, we're set up to, to meet in the gym and have about twenty-two kids have their own designated spots. No one else shares their spots. They have their own chair, their own bin, their own trapezoid table, and then the teachers move around or they bring them to a group area that gets cleaned every time a student, uh, sits back at the table with the teachers in, in small groups. And then we also have five TAs that, um, will eventually be working with students on a one-to-one basis or students that are at, um, high risk of falling further behind. Their, their job, whether it's remote or in the building, their job would be to touch base with them on a daily basis. So those students would eat lunch in the building, and, um, we would try to work with, um, uh, Francesca, Director of Food Service, on making sure parents know that, um, sending the students to school with their lunch that they pick up, whether it's at the junior high or they make it at home, we would like them to bring it with them in the morning, and then they'd have it to eat at their, uh, station in the gymnasium. And then they, they'd also have a, a break outside for like a recess with just the twenty-two or less kiddos. But those, those are, those are the three main changes from our earlier plan. And then, um, trying to think if I'm leaving our morning routine, whether we're remote or, or, or in-person, is going to focus on reading, writing, math, and our SEL, social-emotional supports in the morning. Any questions?
So do you anticipate Wednesday basically just being like what they're doing right now? It would still be kind of, it would just be remote at home? So still with their teachers, still on their Zoom link? It would just be at home on Wednesdays?
Correct.
Okay.
And a lot more connection just with their homeroom teacher to, to not maybe disrupt, you know, what they have going on Monday, Tuesday. They might, you know, uh, one teacher might be in a different place than their pod partner right now. And so, um, they can still do activities together, but we're having discussions on either just doing it by homeroom on Wednesdays. So each student in a homeroom will get their own Zoom links on Seesaw to meet with their teacher for that morning, that morning section.
Cool. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
And then Lindsay will, uh, discuss any changes she's made to her.
Good evening. Uh, we do not have any major changes in terms of the schedule throughout the day other than fine-tuning with collaboration to make sure we have staggered start times for both Manning and Miller, knowing that we moved, um, to the grade-level center model. Uh, our start time and looking at this schedule starts us fifteen minutes earlier if we are able to keep to a schedule and moving everyone in the building efficiently in the morning. So it moves us up by fifteen minutes. Um, one big difference to our morning routine that we thought might take longer, but we're not doing, um, currently because we cannot have more than fifty students in a space, is that students will enter directly in a grade-level door, and they go to, uh, immediately to their classroom, where that was not the case before. So that's a big shift in thinking that, you know, as we self-certify students and check their temperatures, um, we are sending them directly to classrooms to get started with Class Catalyst, a morning check-in. And so we're hoping that that doesn't take too much time from our morning routine, um, as we thought in the beginning it might, uh, might do so. Our end of the day, uh, ends at eleven thirty, and this is where we might look at a little bit of a staggered, um, end day just so that we make sure we're getting students out safely. Um, so the bus would be picking us up at eleven thirty first and then heading over to Miller, um, for students to grab their, any family members in K-one. Um, the car line is going to be encouraged just so that we can really be efficient in making sure we get kids out safely and in safely. We know there are some circumstances of walkers. Um, but I know a lot of people, even though I ask all the time, please do not use the alley. Our friends and neighbors ask not to use the alley for our drop-off. We're really going to encourage and increase our car line capacities so that we can be safe and efficient. Then looking at our breaks, um, throughout the day, these are built in as a schedule just to make sure that recess areas can be spread out. This does not mean that as teachers see stamina in a classroom weighing from time to time, that they can't build in additional breaks that are needed. We have two great spaces outside, weather permitting, that we can have mask breaks, so those are built in in orange. Um, and the last thing that we actually are playing around with now that we've had these discussions for fourth and fifth grade, because there are two teachers and there is one switch of rooms, and looking at the technology setup and how long it would take for a teacher to transition from room to room, is maybe have stu, um, have teachers have block one for Monday, like one day, um, and then block one again on Thursday. Um, and so instead of them teaching two blocks in one day, it's one for a longer period of time, similar to, um, what a junior high or high school model might look like. Um, and then Wednesday, which is something that is new for all buildings, um, we talked about them having a very similar model to what they have now, so they would see both blocks mid-week as a check-in. Um, and something that Tim had pointed out with Wednesdays, but, um, some feedback we got from both parents and teachers when talking about Wednesday, not just for safety, but also keeping kids and families in a routine. If we have to make a lot of transitions from remote to hybrid or back and forth, that kids are understanding of the remote, they're doing very well, and they're building those routines. We want to keep those as well. Questions? Okay?
Yeah, well, Jon, now, Jonette, again, he's going to take a little bit longer because, uh, he's tweaked his the most.
I talk pretty quickly, so hopefully it won't take that long. Uh, thanks for having us tonight. And so our model changed, uh, a little bit. Uh, as a reminder, we were going for a half-day in the, uh, in the morning and then half-day in the afternoon. And so, um, that, you have a larger document, about a five-and-a-half-page, six-page document that goes into more detail. I'm just going to give you the highlights, otherwise we will be here for quite some time. So students are going to be in school for two hours and fifty minutes of instruction on Tuesday, on Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday. Uh, similarly, we'll have Wednesday be that full remote day. On Wednesdays, we're going to continue with the remote schedule that we have been consistently doing since the beginning of the school year, so we'll be sticking with that. Students are going to be placed in four cohorts. So basically, our students right now under remote learning, they're already put into four cohorts based on different factors. And so they'll remain basically in those classes that they're currently in under that remote learning schedule. That way, heaven forbid, if we're moving back and forth from remote to in-person, that we can do so a little more seamlessly than we had, uh, planned in the, in the past. So cohorts one to three are going to be in the morning, cohorts two to four are going to be in the afternoon. There is a reason for that. Uh, Amy Quatrone is the Assistant Principal, and she's usually the one that's doing all of the scheduling. I have a new respect for Amy because I've been doing all of this, uh, or the majority of this, uh, myself this time around. And so those cohorts are going to be set up. Uh, for the most part, those cohorts stay together throughout that time. So approximately twenty-four to twenty-six students are staying together during their time in-person instruction at Westmont Junior High School. Of course, you all know that we have a, we have a dual-language program. We have a instructional math program. We have an enrichment math program. We have honors literacy in some grade levels. And so there's going to be these times where these handful of students, or one or two students, are going to jet off for this or jet off for that, break from the cohort, come back and continue on with that instructional day. So there are some exceptions to that. The, um, the core content is going to be taught in, in person. And there's no disrespect, uh, to my fine arts teachers or my PE teachers when I say that. But literacy, social studies, math, and science will be taught in person, whereas students will be going, um, home or be coming from home already taking, uh, their exploratory class, having lunch, and, uh, and also having their PE class. And resource will be happening, although there will be contact time with the caseload managers at the school in person. It will be happening at home as well remotely at times. There's going to be some exceptions to that, um, when we, when we see fit. So the, uh, the majority of students are going to be staying in one to six large classrooms. And so keep in mind, two cohorts per grade level in the morning, um, are going to be meeting. So we have three really large classes, uh, and that's Ms. Palanzic's, Mr. Prisney, and Ms. Walsh's classrooms. Those classrooms are going to be utilized for this. Additionally, depending on how many parents are going to choose the in-person model, will determine what other rooms we use. So some of the rooms that we may use are, because it's got to be a little bit larger to allow for that six-feet separation from the other students, may be the commons, maybe it be the gymnasium, and maybe the media center. Uh, if we can make it more of a classroom, we will. It all depends on what our parents are deciding and how many students we have at Westmont Junior High School. So the teachers are going to be moving place to place with that small, with that small exception of those few students that are jetting around because of their, uh, because of the different classes that they have. So that the, the students are coming in, um, back and forth, uh, and, I'm sorry, the, the teachers are coming back and forth. The students, for the most part, are remaining the same. Attendance is going to continue to be taken, and, um, and then exploratory and PE classes are going to both be both synchronous and asynchronous, uh, while they're taking that remotely. So sometimes some of the instruction is going to be pre-recorded, and sometimes it's going to be live. So we're going to be working out the kinks in that and, uh, letting our students know and our PE and our exploratory teachers as well. Um, next, so full remote option. I know that some of our parents are still, regardless of, of what's going on in society right now, until there is a vaccine. Some parents are just kind of making that decision that they want to continue with the full remote option. We will have that. I cannot make any promises at this time until I get some commitment numbers, um, some, when we survey our parents of, uh, how many students are going to be and how many cohorts and all. But we are gearing right now, right now, towards our teachers, that core content area, grade-level teacher, teaching the remote learning class as well. At this point, we do not know if that's going to be happening synchronously. So live students in front of you and students that are live on Zoom, if you're going to be, if the teachers will be teaching synchronously, or if there will be a separate remote learning class for that specific teacher, for that specific content area. That we need to develop out a little bit more and see what our numbers show for our remote learning option, full remote learning option for our parents. Let's see here. So if a family chooses that full remote learning option, they are committing to that until, uh, the, the end of the eighteenth of December, so that first semester at Westmont Junior High School. So this is what the schedule looks like, uh, from my point of view and an overview, and that is the star class, an opportunity to check in, like Mr. Motwiler was talking about before. And then going into one of four of their core content area classes, if they are part of cohorts one and three, in the blue, schedule the AM schedule. And then they're going to transition lunch and, and transportation home. And then they're going to start that remote option. It's going to start with that star class again, and then it's going to go into their PE exploratory. Then they have that opportunity for resource and homework with that latter part of the day. For our, our, our white PM day, that is cohorts two and four, their, their day starts their day starts with STAR check-in, so they don't get to sleep in too much. And then, going right into PE and exploratory, maybe a nice two-mile run, and then resource, homework, transition after lunch, to get here, or to get to Westmont Junior High School. And then, again, another STAR check-in, and then their core-content area. And to give a better chance for parents to understand what that could potentially look like, from a student's point of view, it may look like STAR, literacy, math, science, social studies, and then go into the rest. So, that is what it could look like. I'm not going to stay on these slides, unless there's questions at the end, I can come back. As a reminder, this is what our Wednesday schedule looks like. This may be gibberish for those people at home, but this is what we've been living and breathing, what the students have been doing since the start of the school year, this year. So, this document, this is just the first page to the right there. This is the document, that's that six-page document. It goes more in-depth, and it gives additional information. So, please take a look at that, Parents at Home and Board of Education. So, parents are going to want to review this, and they're going to be committing to either the remote learning, that full-remote learning, or the hybrid/blended model that goes up until December 18th. They're also going to be sharing their transportation choice when they do that. And then additionally, as a reminder, Wednesdays will be full-remote. The parent survey looks like this. The parent survey will be going out before tomorrow morning at 8 o'clock. It'll probably go out tonight, when I get home. And I'll be sending that first document that the board has access to as well. I'll send that to parents, along with a link to the survey. Let's see here. It's going to be in English and Spanish. And then, also, you're going to complete one survey. I know that one of our board members has two kids at Westmont Junior High School right now. And so, you're going to complete each, for each child, you're going to create, or do one survey. And then, those survey results, those surveys need to be filled out before Thursday, September 24th, so set your alarms for that time. And we wanted to make sure, Amy and myself, wanted to make sure that parents were able to make informed decisions. So, we know that we're presenting today in front of you. Additionally, we're going to be giving you access to that document. But before you fill out the survey, you have an opportunity tomorrow morning. Amy and I will be hosting in front of the school, out in the open, as long as it doesn't rain. 8:30 to 9:30 at Westmont Junior High School. Bring your coffee, we have a little Q&amp;A session. We are not going to be presenting, it is a Q&amp;A session. Additionally, we have a Zoom, for those that are working, that would like to be part of that. Contact the office to let them know that you would like to be a part of that, even though it says 9:22. If you email the office right away tomorrow morning, they will make sure to send you that Zoom. So, contact any one of the admin assistants, Ms. Pollan, Ms. Anaya, Ms. Ryman, and they'll get you that link. Additionally, we'll be at the Commons tomorrow. And because it's indoors, we are asking for everybody to wear masks, be socially distant, but we'll be there for questions as well. That way, hopefully, our parents can really know what is going on, what is going to be looking like, and be able to fill those forms out appropriately. So, I just wanted to open for any questions.
Hey, John, it's Laura on the phone. Hi, thanks for your presentation. Can you go back to the slide in your presentation that showed the remote-only plan? Thank you, that one, nope, that one.
Yep.
Thank you, that one flashed on the screen really fast, and then went away, at least on my end. So, I just wanted to have you take us back to it really quick. So, in the most recent survey that parents took, what percent of your population chose remote-only? Do you remember?
So, we have not given a survey for at least 3 and 1/2 to 4 weeks. We haven't given a survey, because we didn't know what the plan was definitely going to be. And we felt like we couldn't ask our parents what to make a choice, until they saw what we were offering.
So, you don't really want to go off of that data, that's several weeks old.
Correct, correct. So, we wanted to make sure that we fully developed the schedule before we sent out a survey. What I am hearing, and we're a different community than another school, but I was talking to the principal at Gower today, and she had 75% of her students in-person, 25% chose the remote option. It's across the board, though, some are 80/20. I'm not quite sure where our parents are going to lie with this.
Okay, thank you.
For the students that are choosing remote-only, is this the schedule?
So, no, this will not be the schedule. So, the remote-only schedule, this schedule only applies to Wednesdays, only Wednesdays. So, what we'll be doing is, and there's another, there are multiple schedules behind this schedule, that I have the teacher schedules all built-in. But depending on where we have access to teachers, is when we will be plotting those remote classes, the full-remote classes. And when we build that out, we want to make sure that if we do have students, as Mr. Carey said, we will have students that end up testing positive. There will be positive tests, right? And so, we want to make sure that there could be a flow, so that if a student is normally going to be in-person, get in-person instruction, but there's a test, then that they could seamlessly flow in and out of that remote learning, and then come back to in-person.
I have a quick question about the kind of that transitional hour, between when the AM kids go home and the PM kids arrive. Just a little bit about what the dismissal and arrival looks like, in terms of, you know, keeping those students away from each other in their separate cohorts, and then any cleaning procedures that are taking place, if they're going to be using the same classrooms?
Great question. So, they are going to be using the same classrooms. There's approximately an hour between. And so, we've already worked with sanitation on the plan, in regards to using those awesome Ghostbuster backpacks, to make sure to sanitize not only those larger learning spaces, but also all of the bathrooms as well. During that time, teachers will be having lunch, but there'll also be team meetings, which we have not been able to have in the past. So, that's a great opportunity for the problem-solving, the data piece as well. We do have procedures in place, in regards to the movement of students that are going to be bussers, compared to those that are going to be picked up by parents. So, that's why that data that we're asking for, that's due on Thursday late, late, is really important to us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Going back to Mrs. Peters, is there a decision about the teachers? And with remote-only, are they also doing the, having in-person learners, and simultaneously doing the remote?
Yes, so our goal, based on what was uploaded in the board docs, and I forget, now I'm realizing, I forgot to mention it up here, is that students would sync in to their class. So, that's our biggest hurdle to tackle now, is there's two modes of learning. And so, there's already schools that are doing it, learning from their mistakes, and what they've learned in the first couple of weeks of trying it. And then, obviously, using our students to help balance what that looks like. But that will be a challenge of what we use professional development days for, and team collaborations in the afternoon, to make the best out of a really tricky situation. But the goal would be that all students can remain with their homeroom classes, and have that same experience as their peers, although those modes are going to look different.
So, if I'm to understand it correctly, for the junior high, the kids that will be in-person, will be in-person 4 days a week, either AM or PM. So, the AB is not like a Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday situation. It is Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, either your AM cohort or PM cohort.
Correct, and that does not change, at least until 12:18 or thereafter.
Okay, thank you.
Are you not using a half-school? I know in August, you talked about that model, by using one side of the school versus another side.
Correct, and there's, because, no, we're not going to be doing that. What we're trying to do, that would have worked really well, if we didn't start remote learning. But when we did that, we needed to figure out a way that we're able to continue to talk to our student management system, Skyward, and make sure that the grading doesn't get messed up. Also, make sure that the cohorts are staying together. And so, we only need 6 large learning places, in order to make this happen, and make this happen in still a very sanitized area, or sanitized way. And so, we no longer need to use one side and the other side. For the most part, there's going to be a lot of classrooms that are not utilized, because of the model that we're doing. This is also going to allow for at least, a teacher to have at least 1 office hours in the morning, and potentially the afternoon as well. It depends on how we do remote learning, whether we do it synchronously or not, whether there will be 2 office hours, so that those parents, or those students that are at home in the morning, can be reaching out to that teacher still, before they come to school that day. That's what we're shooting for.
So, limiting the, to piggyback off of your question, Adina, like, what's the benefit of using less classrooms, and having students be in the same space? I know we're sanitizing in the hour between, but doesn't that increase, like, the ability that they might cross-contaminate, because they're sitting in the same room, even if we're spraying? What's the advantage to using just 6 classrooms, versus doing your original plan of half the building, so that no students were, like, physically separated?
We don't have the learning spaces as large. If we did, then that would be an option. And quite frankly, we may be able to do that with the gymnasium and with the Commons. However, if we can choose a classroom, depending on how many students that we have in each cohort, that are in school, if we only have 18 students, then I can use a different classroom than I did for the morning. But it really depends on when those numbers come back. We want to make good choices, and that are going to be safe for our kiddos. But the sanitation, like, it's still going to be able, Mr. Nillis is going to be able to use that amazing backpack, to be hitting all those areas. And remember, 3 of those key areas are really wide-open areas, learning spaces. So, that is a positive thing as well.
So, my question for you, the last, the only question I have, I guess, is, assuming we're going to have to transition back and forth to remote, at least once, if not frequently, if the state changes and we push into that higher metric, how does your hybrid plan transition into remote? So, it's different schedule than the kids are doing now for remote? So, how do you transition back and forth, if you need to?
So, that's a great question. So, when we look at this right here, this is the STAR, and then, this is the kind of the blanket version, the overview. Students, if your son, right, is, his first core class is literacy on his schedule for remote learning right now, he goes to literacy, and then math, and maybe he's got an expo, and then he goes to science, and then he's got something else, PE maybe, and then he goes to his last core-content area class. That is the order of the classes that he will be in, when he comes to in-person, right? And so, and then, expo and PE just happen at the end of the day. And so, when we're doing it that way, we'll be able to go back and forth, with, hopefully, crossing my fingers, without a problem.
Thank you.
Certainly.
And we'll have Jack Baltimore, our high school principal, just quickly talk about this schedule.
Hi, everybody. First of all, I just want to recognize our teachers who've done an exceptional job during the remote learning, they really have. It's diminished from what their people are used to, but it really, they've jumped in with both feet, and done a great job, as have our students. The level of engagement is really high, and I'm very proud of the students, because the overwhelming majority have chosen to take this seriously and do great work, so I'm proud of all of them. We really don't have changes from the original proposal, so I don't know what questions remain. I really encourage our students to come in-person. I know there'll be those who decide not to, but I think one of the huge benefits of our school is the size. And so, we will be able to do the social distancing, so that'll be really positive. So, we're, you know, if parents are on the fence, I wish that they would at least give us the opportunity to experience the in-person learning. The remote learning will continue. Our schedule's going to have to be adjusted a little bit, because the classes have been shortened, and we'll go back to almost regular class periods. The only adjustment we had to make was for transportation at the end of the day. So, normally, we dismiss at 2:45, we'll dismiss at 2:35, and we'll just take a little bit of time out of the schedule during the day to accommodate. But we're talking about 10 minutes, so that's not a major adjustment. I don't think... Of course, masks will be required. Is this my slide, or no? I didn't think so. I saw that, I thought, oh, I think. So...
Jack, can I ask you a question?
Of course.
So, my biggest concern for high school, is I'm probably just misunderstanding, so help me understand, is right now, kids get 4 days of synchronous learning. So, I just want to clarify that, if we move to hybrid, for the students that go to hybrid, they're going to be synchronous on their days they're in-person. Wednesdays will continue to be an independent day.
Yes.
Are the days that they're home asynchronous or synchronous? Are they another Wednesday? Or are they zooming in into the classroom?
Well, our plan is to have them zoom in the classroom.
Okay.
So...
So, they're still going to have 4 days of synchronous learning? It's either going to be at home, or it's going to be in the building?
I want to be clear about that. I want to manage expectations, because I don't think we can ask or expect teachers to be attending to the needs of the students who are physically in front of them, and give full attention to the students who are on the other end of the Zoom meeting. So, what I'm anticipating is that the teachers are going to juggle that, maybe touch base, as an example. Touch base with their students, check in with them, talk about the day's lesson, maybe start a lesson, give them some independent work to do, and then proceed to working with the students who are physically in front of them. So, the students will still be doing work, they still have some kind of a contact with the teacher. But realistically, you know, for our teach, because that's going to be really, I just don't know how a person could juggle that. If they're attending to the needs of the students that are physically in front of them, they're not going to be able to give full attention to the students who are on the other end of the Zoom meeting. They can prompt them, they can begin a lesson, but what I see is that they'll be a hybrid of a hybrid, if you will. They will be synchronous learning, but they're not going to be fully available to those kids on the other end of the Zoom meeting, for the entire class period, because their focus will be at the students who are, and then vice, the students who are physically present with them. And then, vice versa. So, when the students come into the building, they will get more of the teacher's attention, and the students at home can do the work. I mean, that is the advantage of high school students. I fully recognize that what our elementary people are going through, and even at the junior high level to an extent, is much more challenging, because there's greater opportunities for independent learning, when somebody's at the high school setting. So, we're going to continue to have to rely on some of that. But the teachers are strong enough to be able to give students assignments, they can touch base with them, and move forward. So...
So, if you're going to have lesson, if you're going to have 4 lessons a week, Lesson 1 is on Monday, Lesson 2 is on Tuesday, Lesson 3 is on Thursday, and Lesson 4 is on Friday, for all students, okay?
Now, once again, with a caveat, there may be a little bit more of, we're not going to be able to maybe go over as much content as we normally would. So, it may, there may be a little bit of, like, review, progress monitoring, checking. It can't be like 4 completely distinct lessons.
Sure.
What I believe we're anticipating is, there will be a higher level of review that the teachers are doing with the students, as opposed to a brand-new lesson on Monday, and then a brand-new lesson on Tuesday, and Thursday, and Friday. There's going to have to be some scaffolding, some reviewing, from the teacher's perspective, if that makes sense.
Yeah, I have a question, kind of along the lines of what Dana was asking, just as far as the students who are, who opt to do all-remote learning. So, like, if I'm in Cohort A, and I choose to do all-remote learning, then I, you know, first of all, how are you handling that? Are they zooming into the class? And then would they be zooming in with also all of the B cohort kids? But wouldn't the expectations be slightly different for them since they're. They should be in person that day. So I guess I'm just a little unclear still on like the, um, how the two cohorts are going to be dealt with, like. Um, is that B cohort zooming in and like they're on Zoom, but they're working on something else? But the A cohort post person needs to be listening to what's supposed to be happening in class. I, I guess I'm just a little confused still on.
Well, yeah, because it's a confusing situation.
Yeah.
If a student chooses not to do no in-person, they will be continuing in a sense what they've been experiencing the last month. Where they get the opportunity or the expectation that they would zoom in every day. If that make, if that makes that situation clear.
It, it does. Yeah. I, yeah, I guess, but then, so they're zooming in every day and so are the, the B cohort kids.
Yes.
So everybody's zooming in every day at the start of the class period. There's no, so there is no asynchronous necessarily. Except Wednesdays.
Yeah, Wednesdays, absolutely, which have really been fairly productive. First of all, because I think that everybody needs a break from the screens. Number one. Number two, there's a lot of teachers have taken advantage of office hours and conferencing with students on Wednesdays. And some follow-up that they've been doing too. So that will remain the same.
So if, so if a teacher is teaching lit. Uh, Monday, Tuesday, they are teaching lesson one, lesson two, Thursday, Friday, they are teaching lesson three, lesson four, not re-teaching lesson one and lesson two.
Yeah, I hope that makes sense.
Okay.
Because originally we were going to maybe do it a little bit differently, but now with some of the success we've had with the remote learning. We're going to have to keep proceeding, probably not at the same pace. I guess the thing that we came, after our current experience, we came to the conclusion. We, we can't expect people to be attending to the kids in front of them, doing, conducting a Zoom meeting and planning a third thing. Uh, just they, it's not going to, it can't happen. They be, not only for the teacher's sanity, but also for the quality of what's being delivered. So the focus is on, so I, in one sense. The, the lessons will be delivered in a, in a sense, the way they've been delivered the last month. The only difference is, is that half the kids will be in every other day. So there'll be a greater opportunity for teachers to connect. Now, when they're doing that necessarily, they're going to have to maybe not have the same attentiveness that they would have when their full attention. Was given to the Zoom meeting. Does that?
I just got a text from a parent saying, so our, who unfortunately has my number, so I'm asking. So are students that are going remote essentially penalized for going remote?
I wouldn't say penalized, but it's, it's obviously diminished experience because they won't have the benefit of being in person at all. I wouldn't say penalized. But it will be diminished because in this sense, they've chosen not to be in person. They're losing out on that opportunity. But that's their choice, right? So, you know, we can't force people to come in. If they're not coming in, there is a benefit. I believe there will be a benefit if students are present to the teacher can have a different level of interaction. Than exists just in the virtual world. But if they believe, if they make that choice. Yeah, they're making a sacrifice, but they're, and I'm not saying that some people have the right to make that decision. They've chosen, um, more of a virtual experience and they did not want to take play, part of the in-person learning. I don't see any other way we could do it. Because if we would expect people to, at teachers. To be truly attentive to the students who are in front of them, because even though it's a smaller number, they still, that's still going to be good attention they're going to be giving to those kids. They're still going to have the lessons that are happening through the Zoom session, the virtual learning. We can't expect them to do another level of some kind of instruction. Uh, that's just not. For, as I say, for two reasons. First of all, because these people are, you know. Really under a, a new situation here. They're trying to adapt to as best as possible. And second of all, that would diminish the quality of the work that's been given. So when people make, that's why we encourage people, we're anticipating an average class size of less than ten. That's be, that's just a benefit of our school. So we should be able to social distance. The opportunity to come in person is present and we highly encourage people to take advantage of that. If somebody says, no, I don't want that, the instruction will continue all virtually. But the parents and the students who are, make, choose that option are sacrificing the opportunity to touch base with their teachers two times a week. Is that clearer, really?
Yes. I just, I think I'm. I, I understand this isn't a possible situation. And we can't do all things well. I think we, is, is my question is, is we need to be providing equal opportunities for students. If there's a reason that they're medically compromised and can't come to school or they. You know, I don't know if I'm asking.
Is, is there a world where it makes more sense at the high school level to stay remote if we're doing really well remote? And doing one thing really well and then offering the opportunity for those students who need more support to come into the building. Um, I, in, in a smaller group basis so that it, so that, because it sounds like to me, we need to slow down. On our, on our teaching, if you will, if we're going to split our time, we're going to have to slow down a little bit. And that may or may not be great for some students or detrimental for some students or, or challenging for our teachers in a different way than it's challenging now. So is there, is there a world where, where it makes more sense to do one thing really, really well at the high school that's, that's working well? That is different than at the other buildings in the district?
Well, I'd, obviously that's a possibility and there are people who would support that option. For the, for the reason that we, the remote is going under the circumstances fairly well right now. But what we sacrifice is not having in person. So there are definitely people on our staff who would prefer to continue all remote. And I could see why there would be a benefit to that option. And there are also teachers who want to see their students on at least. On a fairly regular basis. We're not of one mind, just like our community, just like, uh, you know, every, we're not of one thinking. There's different points of view and I think they all have validity to them. So there are certainly teachers to say, we want to start seeing, it's better to see our kids at least a couple of days a week than not see them at all. There are also teachers who say that putting that component into place is going to distract us. Remote's going well, there's still safety concerns. Why don't we continue all remote? We're not of one mind. To give you an honest answer.
I mean, I know that we can't all be of one mind because we are, we are.
Yeah.
All individuals. It's what makes the human experience awesome. And it is, it is. It's what makes us all cool and exciting because otherwise we'd be really bored, right? But is, is there a world where, where we serve our students best by making a different decision for a different school? I guess, I guess that's, because it seems like if remote is going well. And it leaves us this opportunity to connect with the students who need that, that in-person. That in-person experience with their teacher, um, maybe not twice a week exactly, maybe it's. Maybe it's a little bit different than that, but, but pulling in those students who need some more support from their teacher in smaller groups. If that is something that. Makes more sense for our students in the community and I understand it, I mean, and maybe it's a heck of a lot more complicated, but, um, to do it that, I, I, I'm just. That's the, because it seems like there's such a different story, not story, different. Different situation at the high school than the others, than the other schools where you've got more kids with. Less transportation. You've got at least some of the kids at the high school who can get there on their own, like, you know, you just have a different. Level of expectation out of, out of, out of your high schoolers. They're able to be a little bit more independent.
They're a little bit more able to be independent than the elementary students, most certainly.
I think it's, and I don't know, um, if you guys have the numbers, but I'm all, I mean, we don't even know, do we yet, how many students are opting in for all remote for the high school? I mean, maybe it's not that many, um, and so.
Well, it, to answer you, we don't have a definitive number, but the trend data has been between, I mean, it's going to be someplace between twenty and thirty percent. If, if it's on the high side, which I don't, I think people are becoming a little more comfortable. But there will still probably be close to twenty percent who will opt for not coming in the building at all.
And I, I think for tho, for those kids, I mean, I think it's worth trying this since everybody has worked really hard to try and figure out how this can work. And I, you know, to just get them at least a little bit of face-to-face time in person with their teacher, church, teachers versus no face-to-face time. And, you know, and that being said, I think when the kids are at home, um, we've said that the high schoolers are a little more independent and. Um, I know that you know this and your teachers know this. There's so many tools out there to do really amazing asynchronous things. Whether that's ever, an instructional video that the teacher is creating, that the students are watching. So they're still kind of getting that interaction. Um, when they're at home, I guess, just one thing that sounds like it might need to be ironed out a little bit is. Um, if I'm in cohort A, um, or, you know, if I'm in cohort B and I'm not supposed to be in person that day. Um, am I on that Zoom call or not? You know, I feel like it's hard for a teacher to manage their kids in person. Plus their one kid from cohort A who is streaming in, plus their ten kids from cohort B who are streaming in. So, you know, I actually think that, you know, maybe they're not on the Zoom call to, to that end, so. I, it's just, it's something to think about, I think.
It absolut, it absolutely is, yeah.
Like if a student's sick from cohort A?
No, if they have opted into all e-learning.
All e-learning.
Yeah.
So we're very early in the school year and so motivation may be high for remote learning at this particular juncture. But as the year wanes on, uh, if you're all remote, I could see that being more of a challenge. Uh, it gets tiring, there's whatever rationale, you know, the, the student would have. So, you know, the, the, the actual in-person time with your teacher is a motivating factor for many students. And so, you know, to be all remote is exactly what it says, you're remote.
Yeah.
I just, I'm fine with moving forward. I just want to make sure we're ready to do both and to do both adequately. If we're not ready to do remote well and, because that's what the, that's in hybrid well for the students that choose remote. That's what we're called to do in this situation. So if we can't do it well, then we shouldn't move forward. If we think we can do it well. I'd love to hear your thoughts. Oh, go ahead. Sorry, Laura.
Yeah, no, and I didn't mean to cut you off Dana, but go ahead. So finish your question.
That's it.
I mean, I guess I've been sitting here thinking the same thing and I, I, John, um. Uh, you know, presented his plan and I, I didn't really hear a plan for what full remote looks like for those students who are planning to go. Um, you know, fully remote and not do hybrid. Um, and, um, you know, now, you know, we have concerns about the high school. I guess I'm, I'm kind of concerned at every grade level that we're going to be providing a different quality experience. Um, for those students who choose hybrid versus those students who choo, choose, um, remote. And, um, you know, I, I don't know a way around that frankly, and I guess I would. If an admin, administrator feels that I'm characterizing things incorrectly for their student body, like Tim, Lindsay, you know. John, feel free to stand up and say no. I think it's going to be the same quality of education for everybody. But, um, you know, I, I'm, I'm feeling concerned across the board that, um, I haven't heard enough about. What the remote-only plan looks like. Um, in order for us to feel comfortable making this decision. And I think it's really, really, um, putting our parents in a bad position. And I, and I know you guys have worked hard and I'm, I'm respectful of the hard work, but I think it is an impossible position to put parents in. Um, give your child the best quality education they can get. By sending them into school, um, in this situation or, you know, um, give them a, a lesser quality education. And keep them safe at home. I, I just, um, I'm feeling uncomfortable and I'm not pointing any fingers or laying blame. I know everyone has worked tirelessly on this and as we've said a million times, we all want to get our kids back in school, in person. But I'm very concerned about the equity between the two models across the board right now.
Well, and I'll, I'll let the, uh, principals weigh in, but, you know, um, here's the reality, the, we're. Last spring, when we started remote. Um, you know, there were some hiccups and, and also our hands were tied a little bit. Um, I think if you were to ask our staff at this point, that they feel like they're, they're kind of hitting their stride now with, with full remote learning. You know, they've been at it for a while. They've had some, uh, staff development. They've, uh, met as teams and, and worked through some. Some little snafus and issues and so they're, they're kind of hitting their stride. When we flip the switch, so to speak, and implement hybrid. I'm anticipating that there will be a little bit of a backslide. I mean, I think that is something that we all have to understand and know. But just like our staff has been able to work through those things and has really done a great job with remote. The same thing is going to happen with the hybrid model. I mean, there, there might be a little bit of a backslide. They're going to be balancing those students who are in front of them and the students who are, uh, at home remotely synchronous. And it's, it's going to take a little bit, but, but they'll get there, you know, I'm confident that they'll get there. So I understand everybody's hesitation. I think, I don't think there's, you know, I'd be lying if I told you. That a hundred percent, I'm confident this is the best thing that we should be doing. Um, because there are some unknowns, but I do think that the, the buildings have put together some, some solid plans. And I think that, um, again, our staff will, will step up to, you know, the challenge that's in front of them. But in terms of, uh, responding maybe more specifically to Laura's question, John?
So very good question, Laura, and, uh, and I would agree with Mr. Carey. Um, in regards to at Westmont Junior High School, the, uh, when, when you look, if you were to look at the schedule. We're not going to have a problem, at least for the sixth grade, because we do not have honors. We do not have enriched math at the sixth grade level. We're not going to have a problem to continue to have a sole remote learning class. That the content area teachers are going to be teaching. That's a non-issue for us. That will definitely be happening. Some of that synchronous, those synchronous options for the in-person along with the students that are going to be accessing classroom. The classroom remotely, um, that, that may be happening at the seventh and eighth grade level. Where we've got to kind of sort that out and look at the numbers. That is a possibility to do that now. A plus side of that is that, once again, I, I have been working with other administrators of other schools in similar size. And they have been doing this and they've already learned some different things. Are we going to take what they've learned and execute everything perfectly based on their, their, you know, learning curve? No, there's good, there are going to be bumps, but at the same time, it can be done, um, at, at least at the middle level. And so, so therefore I think that, I think that we do have things in place that can make that happen. We do. We're very fortunate that we have a great tech coach and an instructional coach that can support those things as well. Um, so, so we may be a little bit different because of how we're setting up the schedule in, in the cohort way to, to do that. Did, did that, did that help a little bit, uh, Laura?
So are you saying you're going to use, like at the sixth grade level, you're using, you will have some, uh, teachers that are doing remote only?
Uh, no.
No.
Nobody is going to be doing, as of right now, nobody is going to be doing purely remote only. So Ms. Mrs. Meyer is our sixth grade math teacher and she will be teaching two blocks of math. Or two, two classes of math in the morning, two in the afternoon to cohort one, to, or one, three, two and four, right? Respectively. And, and then she's going to have a, a planned period. And then she's going to have an opportunity to do remote learning with the students that are at home remotely. Okay? So that's going to be separate. When you start getting into seventh and eighth grade, I've got it, I've got an English language arts teacher, Ms. Paloncik in seventh grade. Not only does she need to take care of the regular, um, ELA class, the regular literacy class. And two of those, but she also has to do an honors literacy class in the morning only. And so therefore it gets a little bit, we have to determine what our numbers are to determine, and I know that this gets in a lot of depth, right? But some of the teachers, we may have to kind of look at to see if we need to do synchronous instruction remotely and in person. Not at the sixth grade level and not in the afternoons of all the grade levels. There's just a, we need a little more data from our parents to determine. data from our parents to determine what that piece looks like. Laura, did I, did I clarify that a little bit for the junior high?
Yeah, that's helpful, thank you.
Sure.
So, where John is now is where we took the leap three weeks ago to say we need a commitment from parents and here are two options that we can support depending on how the data comes back. This is the tricky part, that we're trying to make two equitable plans. That's impossible. It's, it's truly is impossible when our teachers have done amazing things, I can't speak to that enough. And so, what I ask us all to think about is during a very uncertain time is how can we be the most consistent? Because if we can't be consistent and knowing that we're gonna be going back and forth, that's gonna be inconsistency for our teachers trying to prepare the best they can for students. And then that goes back to our students and parents having to plan for, you know, two different models of learning. So, I really like what Mr. Carey shared, that's our biggest thing to tackle of a teacher now having, having to navigate two modes of learning. And Mr. Baldorman is right in that to do those both well, something has to give. We're not two people, you know, we're one person that maybe has tech tools that maybe work to help and provide that and we'll get better at it, but the expectations have to be really realistic of what we're trying to do. And we've just now are hitting our stride with remote learning. So, we're about to switch it up and we have to be realistic in having that conversation. I think the only models that look very different are K1 and the little kids, because they have models that can support in a different way because of their staffing and, and the needs of those young learners. So, I'm gonna pass it off to Tim.
Thank you, this is Tim Beckon. If you can't save me or not. But, Miller is definitely 100% set up to, from the get-go, we were set up to transition with very little hiccups from remote only to in-person learning. And the parents and the teachers and even the students have played a key role into fine-tuning day by day to get where we are right now. And as we are definitely hitting our stride, we are set up to have our students that have chosen remote learning not miss a beat either, because we have dedicated staff to work with those students and they, for the most part, if, you know, if it's a student that's quarantining for a day or two, we have to figure out what that looks like for that one student. But for the most part, if they're in a remote learning opportunity for the rest of the semester, we have a place that they call home and it's very, that's dedicated for their, their learning capacity. So, I think for us at, at Miller, our biggest piece that we are just trying to navigate is making sure that a nurse is on staff at, at all the buildings and if that's gonna, if, when that happens, that we have, we have two areas and, and we have two zones in this, in each of the school buildings where students are, if they have any symptoms, that we have a plan in place and procedures for following protocol and making sure everyone in the building is safe and that we follow the point of contact for the components to make sure everyone's notified in a timely manner.
Tim, thank you for that, and I'm sorry my dog Gracie really enjoyed your comments as well. I'm sure you guys could hear that in the background, I apologize.
How much are we using like TAs to help assist with the, with both, like maybe assisting with giving the attention to the kids at home in all of the buildings?
So, that was a decision that Manning looked at and that was what we asked for coming up to be approved for tonight. Number one and what? That was approved, thank you, because we have to think about the needs of some of these transition things if a teacher is out and internally, how can we cover that? And then within the class, how can we possibly navigate students that have needs remotely and in person that have IEPs? And so, breaking that up added a whole new layer, so we thought that having additional assistance in the classroom might help us to provide a better hybrid rather than hiring on new staff, which was still falling short, at least for Manning and our original plans. And then made us have a switch of homeroom teachers based on parent decisions, which really, when you think about it, looks great for numbers, but our teachers have done, once again, a great job of building relationships in this way. And now no one wants to switch, which is a good problem to have in some ways.
So, I guess, it's Laura again, do you mind if I jump in with some overarching questions? Jack, I, I feel like you've been standing on the spot and we're kind of doing, we're kind of doing overarching questions, but, you know, I guess it was the point about the back and forth and the consistency has been brought up a couple of times in folks' presentations, and I just want us to linger on that for a minute. So, Kevin, can you address overall, if we vote tonight, can you basically outline for us if we vote yes tonight essentially to go with the hybrid plan? Is there anything that could change between now and October 5th that would reverse that decision?
Uh, yes, there is. And can I, I've got a couple more slides.
Oh, okay, sorry. I'll save my overarching questions till the end.
But I think I'll touch on your overarching question as well.
Okay, so, why don't I let you finish your presentation?
Yeah, let me just bring this in for Lanny, I know we've been talking about this for a long time. So, again, for the in-person hybrid learning, some of the things we want our parents to understand, you know, what it means hybrid, what it's gonna look like. And then some of the, the overarching question Laura's asking, I've got some FAQ's that I know are floating out there to, to talk a little bit about some of those things. But, masks again will be required and we supply our staff with masks, we'll supply our students with masks, we'll have extra paper masks on hand in case a student arrives to school not bringing the mask that they were given. The six feet of social distancing, you know, honestly, I think at the two extremes of our continuum, it's the most difficult to maintain, and I think the little ones, it's, it's a challenge maintaining six feet. I think with our older students who like to socialize and I think it gets to be a challenge with the older students as well. But, you know, we're gonna enforce that as much as possible. Parents will be certifying that this child is symptom-free before coming to school, and we will be doing temperature checks of our staff and students. We're, we've already stepped up our, our cleaning of our schools and disinfecting as John referenced, the Ghostbuster backpacks, all of our custodians have the backpacks so that they can quickly come in. This room itself has probably been sanitized two or three times before this, this meeting, because it's used for other meetings and so then it gets sanitized as a, as a result. We are gonna have, and this is what Tim referenced too, and it's a little bit easier in some schools than others, but we're gonna have two quarantine rooms, because if we have students who develop symptoms after they're in school, they're gonna have to be quarantined until their parent can come and get them. And that room itself then, we don't want to necessarily have to use it the next day, you know, we want to keep it sealed and then have a custodian go in and sanitize it. And so, we want to have more than one space available to quarantine. We're already in this practice, anytime we have a suspected case, I'm starting to get on to a first-name basis with DuPage County Health, talking to them. They provide us guidance, anytime we have a unique situation and say, okay, you know, however, do we need to quarantine other people in this, in this regard? And they'll advise us on that. But, we'll be working closely with DuPage County Health. Again, what parents need to be aware of, you know, you, you have more than one child in our district. You send your children to school and one of your children, you know, third grade, goes down to the office and has, you know, is nauseous or has a headache or something, and this is a, a new symptom that your child does not typically have these, these types of symptoms, that child's gonna have to be picked up and go home, and their brothers and sisters are gonna have to go home. So, the junior high student needs to go home. If you have one in high school, all the students go home. And all the students are home until your child is either evaluated by a physician and we get something from the physician saying this is not COVID-related, they are tested or they quarantine. And it's not just that child that has to quarantine, the other children can't come back to school until we get that documentation. So, we want our parents to know, you know, we know how for some of our parents, you know, that may be a very difficult thing, you're at work, you get that call, but that's the way, if we want to have a hybrid model, these are the steps we need to take. So, students could be quarantined up to 14 days. Again, we stressed this before, school will not be the same. The students are gonna be wearing masks. If students are refusing to, and again, age of student obviously comes into play, but, you know, we'll give warnings, we'll talk to the student, but eventually they may be sent home, you know, or they maybe, you know, that family may have told your child, you know, if they're not gonna comply with the mask, then they're gonna have to be a remote learner, because again, we, we need to create the safest environment possible. We'll be doing the temperature checks, the self-certification, social distancing. Many of those social aspects of school are not gonna happen. You know, students aren't gonna have recess, you know, and most of the buildings lunches are gonna take place. And even at the high school, you know, I saw the way the countenance is set up, it's not six, eight, eight chairs around the table. It's one chair, all the chairs are facing the same direction, you know, but again, that's the reality that, that we're in. And I'll reference this a little bit more, because this kind of touches on Laura's question, I think, a little bit. But I think our families need to be aware of the possibility that we'll be pivoting back and forth between in-person and remote. And I've, I've got some guidance and guidelines as to what that possibly could, could look, look like. But again, you know, nobody knows how this is gonna play out and we, nobody knows what the fall is gonna bring, the winter's gonna bring. And so, we have to be sensitive to those things. These are some frequently asked questions that, you know, is there a number or percent of COVID-19 cases that will determine if a school or district pivots to remote? The one thing I can tell you is that, and I'm gonna go, I'll get back to this slide in a second. That, you know, one thing we'll be looking at are these metrics here. So, if the positivity rate gets up to, I believe it's 10%, then that arrow would be red. If the cases per 100,000 gets up to 100,001, or I mean, 101, then that arrow will be red. And that would cause us to go remote, we would go back to remote. Now, that situation, we have a little bit more time, because again, that, that data will become available on Monday of that week. In conversations that we've had with DuPage, DuPage County Public Health, they feel that giving it the week and then transitioning to remote, they think that would be, that they would not have an issue with that. So, on that Monday, we could let our families know, as of Friday, we're going back to remote. We would be in remote for a minimum of two weeks. And the minimum of two weeks is for, the county health department won't lower the category you're in for two weeks. So, if the following week, the numbers improve and go back to moderate, they're still gonna keep us in the red. And the other thing too is, we, we're trying to avoid that flipping back and forth, right, two weeks on, two weeks off if we can. And so, that way our families know for these two weeks you'll be on remote. If we go back to moderate, then, you know, we'd be looking to go back to our hybrid model. The other thing about, you know, is there a percent, the other thing that's, that can happen, and these, this is when you may not have the same amount of lead time, but the percent of positive cases isn't necessarily driven by the number of students as much as it is about the adults, because you have to have the staff that is available to have the students in the building. And so, you know, it could happen that a building, there's an outbreak and we're down staff and we may have to say to this, you know, this building, you're gonna have to go remote for two weeks. Or, you know, it, it could be the district, it just depends on how those outbreaks happen. In terms of the student piece, the way the county public health department is defining an outbreak is if two students, I'm trying to remember now, it's two students in the same class, and is it in a week? I'd have to, I'll have to check how many days are involved, but there is a correlation that they have, and then they, they would say that that constitutes an outbreak. Doesn't necessarily mean that the building would be closing, but definitely we'd be talking to DuPage County Public Health and, and how to handle it. How many times could we pivot back and forth? Well, you know, the reality is, you could be doing it all year. Do I think that's practical, or I think that's the best thing that you know? Because as Lindsay pointed out, one of the key things is consistency, you know, at least it may not be the best situation for all of our families to be on remote right now, but all of our families know, come Monday, their child's in remote learning, you know, and so, that uncertainty. So, you know, if, if the numbers in DuPage County become so volatile that it's like every couple of weeks we keep going into the red area, I would probably be talking to the board about, you know, I think we need to go to remote and stay there until there's some consistency with, with the numbers, you know. So, we would be taking a look at that. Same thing, is there a, a point when we would say remote learning for remainder of the year? One would be if the governor, similar to what he did last spring, the governor makes an emergency declaration, that could flip us. And again, if we're just finding that it is just too volatile a situation, we're lacking the consistency, we're, we're not able to meet the needs of our, of our staff or our families, then, you know, we, we could make that decision. And then what will the notification be like to resume remote or back to hybrid? Again, as I pointed out, if it's, in most cases, we're hoping to let people know on a Monday that Friday is gonna be the last day, we're, we're in that environment. There may be occasions though, again, you know, there's an outbreak in a building that we may, you know, similar to snow day, parents may find out, hey, tomorrow, we, we need to close the building. We're hoping that that isn't the reality, but again, some of these things, it's a little bit difficult to, to answer. So, in terms of, and this is also something Laura asked about, okay, so, if the board decides, yes, go with October 5th, let's, you know, transition to hybrid, what are some possible things that could prevent that from happening? One would be again, come Monday, the metrics for DuPage County increase. And again, in that two-week cycle, that would incorporate October 5th, we would not be going October 5th. As Tim pointed out, we hired one new nurse. We're in the process of hiring a second nurse, but we definitely want to have that nurse onboard, so that come October 5th, we don't have one nurse who has to make the rounds around multiple buildings. So, that would be one thing. We're in the process of hiring three custodians, we have two resign, and then we want to have an extra custodian. And so, we're in the process, and again, we want those people in place, ready to go. We're finalizing the busing, you know, as the principals tweak their plans, there's some adjustments that Westway needs to make for us, and so they're currently working on that. The other thing that I was having a, I can't remember who I was having a conversation with today, but, you know, the reality is, we're not the only district that Westway is serving. So, as other districts are starting to consider hybrid and when they're gonna start, and most of them are not going with their normal school and most of them are not going with their normal school day, now that's another layer that Westway is trying to look, you know, work through. Because a lot of times, the way districts were set up, they were able to use the same driver for multiple districts, the same buses, and now, you know, they're trying to juggle those things. So, we're, we're finalizing that. We're continuing our conversations with bargaining groups, but as the data's showing, you know, the WTA, definitely, they're more in favor of it. And then, the last piece is that I haven't had a chance to discuss this with the principals. But again, we have five remote planning days that have been allotted to the school district by this ISBE. They don't count, they count it as a student attendance day. So, if you use one, you don't have to make up the day like an emergency day. But probably, I think it would be good for our staff to have a remote planning day prior to October 5th. So that they have, you know, an opportunity to, to really finalize their plans and be comfortable with starting up in the, in the hybrid mode. So, did I touch on any question, Laura?
Yes, you, you pretty much covered it, Kevin, thank you.
Okay.
Do you have any other slides?
No, I'm good, I'm good. I'm good.
So, I just wanna backtrack a little bit on the, the, um, the experience and the, the flipping back and forth and the consistency. I mean, I, I guess I, you mentioned that that's, obviously, the consistency for, for families is rough. You know, just even my own experience trying to figure out a babysitter who will be here for maybe two weeks and maybe until December, I don't know. I mean, it's just rough, it's rough on families, it's gonna be rough on the kiddos. How does that consistency, like, how do you, how do you foresee as educators that consistency impacting the quality of their education? And, and I think someone earlier said, obviously, we'll have to backtrack a bit. So, if we have a lot of back and forth, I, I see that as being a really big problem. So I guess I just, I know we're gonna have to keep a close eye on it. But, what are your thoughts on the quality of education and, and how consistency is gonna impact that?
Do you guys wanna weigh in, or?
I think, this is Lindsay, because I don't think I'm on camera, just fine. I think that one thing that we need to be thinking about, most importantly, when we're talking about, you know, if we're going to move into hybrid and do it safely and transition with all those pieces, I definitely think people are, are willing to attempt it and see. It's after that move of back and forth. And I keep saying these what-ifs, and I don't like to live in what-ifs. But, in any building, when we know there's absences for that day, and we're talking about teachers potentially needing to zoom in if they can do it remotely, and who's covering the classroom, and all of those little pieces that are day-to-day in a typical day without COVID-19, I think I said the same statement before in the meeting, those are things that pop up in my mind of a student's experience, where if a teacher has to quarantine for 14 days, what does that look like? Those are a lot of what-ifs that maybe we do have to at least attempt if we're doing it safely. I worry about, you know, as we go back and forth in our school improvement teams, both parents and, and, and staff have talked about, that's where we start to really think about, is it worth it? And, and we're speaking solely about elementary, but as a district, you know, I know there's lots of considerations for different developmental ages.
Yeah, I mean, I think, and I don't know if another administrator wanted to jump in and speak to that. But I think one of my concerns, or just the reality of this, I think, I think parents in the community need to know the reality of what, what, you know, this could look like. And us going back in a hybrid model does not mean we'll be going back for certain for any period of time. And it also, I think this meeting has illustrated, you know, the quality of the education. You know, we think the kids who will be attending in-person in hybrid will have a, a good experience, and hopefully, the remote ones will as well. And then, as we switch back and forth, I, I just, you know, I think we just need to make sure everybody goes in eyes wide open. So I'm, I'm glad we're having these conversations transparently.
This is, uh, this is Tim, just to speak for the K-1 building level. Our, our Wednesdays, now that we were given the opportunity to use Wednesdays as a deep cleaning day and, and make sure everyone is learning remotely in the same format we are now, we're using that to make sure every week, we're kind of staying current on the things we need in case we did have to go to a remote setting for, you know, a week or two. So, our, we're using the Wednesdays to not miss a beat for our K-1 families and kiddos to have the same schedule, same time slots, working with the same teachers, just doing it in a remote setting. So, we will be prepared if that, you know, extends beyond a Wednesday. So our, our teachers and students will have at least some practice every week with that, with that schedule and format, which won't, like I said, miss a beat from the, the in-school learning on Mondays, Tuesdays, Thursdays, and Fridays.
And this is John for the junior high school. Similarly to what Mr. Wyler was talking about, we're gonna continue to have Wednesdays be that remote day. But additionally, I, I think you bring up something good, Laura, that there is going to be some transition as we talk about what the expectations look like for our students when it comes to remote learning. The students are gonna be entering the schools, at some point, they're gonna be entering the schools again. And we, we're going to have to take a step backward and say, these are the expectations while you're at school. And so, there's going to be a little bit of that transition, but then we're gonna start jetting forward again.
All right, thank you. I guess I have a couple more questions unless someone wants to jump in. Kevin, these things you have here on the transition to hybrid to be ready for October 5th, so are these, are these items, if any one of them is not met, does that mean we do not go in-person? Or are these like, we're working towards these and, you know, again, I'm trying to set expectations for the community. If we vote yes tonight, do we still have to meet these five things?
I would say, well, definitely, well, probably the first three. You know, we, we obviously need the busing. And then, I'm pretty confident that our employees would not feel comfortable bringing students back without having the, an additional nurse, and then also the custodians to sanitize the buildings effectively. So I think those are the key ones. I don't anticipate anything coming up with bargaining groups that would be something that we can't work through. We've been very collaborative throughout this entire process, and we've been able to work through things. And then, the remote planning day, obviously, that's, you know, something that if we don't think we can, can fit that in, that's not a deal breaker. But definitely, we want to get the, our nurse custodians and finalize the busing. And in terms of, of hiring, even though our next board meeting's not until, I think, October 13th, we can still bring an employee onboard pending board approval. So, that's not something that would prevent us from hiring those individuals prior to October 5th.
So Kevin, one other thing I just have been thinking while we've been on the Zoom. For those families who choose remote only, is, would it be an option to very quickly, you know, a week or two into the start of the school year, do some sort of formal touch base with those families? Make sure they feel like they're getting a quality education? Like, what's our ability to assess how well the remote-only option is going? And then, and then adjust, not necessarily adjust the whole plan, but adjust what we're doing in remote at each level in order to make sure those families are getting a quality education experience and do not feel, you know, pressured to send their kids in-person to get that quality education?
Well, I think, you know, the, the qualitative piece, you know, which I think was the first part of your question, you know, definitely, we can reach out to families and, and students and ask them how it's going and if it's, they feel it's meeting their needs, so we can definitely do that. The other piece to it, I think currently, every building has a data team in place. And even right now, one of the things that they're doing with their data teams is seeing how the current remote learning is working for our students, if it's meeting their needs, and we're meeting their academic needs. So, that process, those data teams will not only be discussing the students in, that they have in-person, but they'll also be discussing the academic progress of those remote learners. And then determining how the remote learning plan needs to be tweaked or what additional support those students may need in order to be successful.
All right, thank you.
I have a couple of quick, hopefully, quick questions. I'm sorry, I know that it's getting really late. Just, are students gonna have their devices and laptops still when they go back to hybrid in-person?
Yes.
Okay, so I think that, you know, you know, just to echo something that you, many of you have said tonight about the teachers kind of catching their stride as far as remote learning. I mean, I think that the other thing we have to do is just, as far as the quality of education that students are getting who opt into all remote learning, is have a little faith in our teachers. Because I think they have just learned a tremendous amount about how to make the learning and the content and themselves more accessible when they're not physically in-person with their students. And so, you know, it's a lot to manage the kids in front of you with the few kids at home who opt in. But I think that the teachers are gonna do an amazing job with it because of all of the kind of training essentially that they've had with this all-remote learning. So I just think that's something else to think about as we hopefully give them this chance to enter into hybrid learning. So that was the first thing. And then, can I just ask one quick question about Manning and Miller and, and their hybrid plans? And I, I hope this doesn't come across the wrong way, but I, I'm just hoping for the community to get a little bit of rationale about the half-days there, because they're typically in a full day. And it appears that all of the other hybrids, even though you're only bringing in half of the students for the junior high at a time, there's still students in front of you for a full day for the junior high and for the high school, but not for the elementary school. So just a little bit about that decision.
Sure, the main portion of the decision was not to have the kids in the building eating lunch in the classroom and having them take off masks, also following the state of Illinois guidelines for how much screen time is, is appropriate versus how much you can do with students that, that's not attached to the screen. And then also making our teachers reach out to their students in a Zoom-like fashion in the afternoons, where they're not just, you know, they're, they're dismissing their kids at 11:45 and then they don't touch base with them. So there's still opportunities for them to become, you know, small group interventionist or specialist or guided reading workshops or guided math workshops, still with small groups. They just won't have their, their whole group with them in front of them at, at the same time.
Great, thank you, that helps.
It's the same, we both have the same model originating to be full day, five days a week. That's how we got to grade-level centers, of being able to spread out and use all of our resources at capacity. And then when you're looking at lunch, stamina of little kids, those were two of the biggest decision-makers. So both of our plans have the potential of going full day if we feel like we can go that even in a stage, or in a, in a phase four. So we have that potential to grow in that way, but let's do it in steps that we can manage in hopes that we don't have to bounce right back to remote once we get it going.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions?
I do, I'm kind of, so originally, the Wednesday, I guess Wednesdays, help me understand Wednesdays. So I understand a deep cleaning of the buildings, and I also understand practicing the remote skills. I'm a little concerned, especially because we're in elementary, we're going just half-days for good reasoning, that we're losing, and at the high school, we're losing a, a day of in-person. If, I, I know the original guidelines had for, we needed to have a cleaning day, but they don't include that anymore. Are a lot of school districts that are doing hybrid taking a day in the middle of the week to clean like that?
They, they are taking a day, won't necessarily, isn't necessarily the middle of the week, but they are taking a day, and it's for the two reasons. One is, again, to try to still have a little bit of consistency, because if you have to pivot to remote, again, staff and students are used to that environment. So if they need to make that pivot. And then also, it does help with the, the cleaning of the buildings, sanitizing of the buildings. I mean, this is a minor thing, but I don't know if you notice your, your tables, but if you look them in at the right angle, it looks like there's watermarks on them. And that's because, like today, when Joe came through here, he sprays the tables and they're, they're wet. And he's not wiping them off. You know, like for, for John's model, the surfaces won't get wiped off. They're sanitized, the chemical dries, there's no problem with putting your hands on the desks and so forth. But eventually, they, they should be wiped out, you know, because you're just gonna keep building up that film. And so, part of it is just taking care of some of those things, you know, that they're not able to focus on because they're, they're sanitizing. But the, the primary reason is, again, it's, it's to, you know, have the students and the staff in that mode in case we need to pivot back to that.
And I guess my concern, I mentioned this last meeting. And I think it touches a little bit on the WTA's survey questions as well. So the survey question, like, there was like 56% of folks said, I'm gonna come back to school, but I'm, I moderately feel unsafe. And certainly, we want our staff, especially if we're asking them to teach in 97 ways to students at home, to students in front of them, to stand on their heads, to feel safe. And I think, I think we all could use alcohol at this point, just this conversation, parents watching, our, our staff. And so, I just really want to make sure that the procedures are really clear. And I'm throwing out that again, that idea of having really like an SOP for how we're doing procedures. So I heard lots of talk of, we have really strict protocols for entering and leaving. We, other things you guys mentioned, we're cleaning, contact tracing, what happens when a child is positive? How are we communicating? But I think to help our staff feel safe, to help our parents feel safe, we really need that concretely written down in a procedural way, online, parents know it. So that when craziness happens, like a teacher gets a fever in the middle of the day, or when three custodians are sick, there is a clear path of what we're gonna do. There's a Plan B and perhaps C in this situation. So I would just encourage some thought. I think it will be a win, it'll be a pain in the butt to write, but it'll be a win-win for communication and for just being very clear and consistent among buildings, among departments of how we handle the, the situations that come, come up.
And Dana, we are in that process.
Oh, great.
We, I don't know how much time we spent on it, but we went through several vignettes about, okay, this happens from the littlest thing, from, you know, a parent forgets to self-certify their child. How are we gonna handle it as a, as a district? So that every building, we're all doing it the same way. So we, we did that, I shared that with the staff. When we finish it all, we're gonna, you know, make it available to parents as well. But yes, we are doing that, we want to make sure that everything is done consistently in all the buildings, we're handling the situations in the same way.
I have a lot, I think we all need to continue to have a lot of grace from each other. Have grace for our school board members too. It's, this is really, really hard for all of our staff, all of our parents, all of our teachers. We're all trying to make the right decisions, and this feels crazy to, to make very complex logistical plans in a way that we're trying to keep everybody safe. So we really do thank you for your, your time.
Okay, I think we're ready to move forward with the next part, since we have some, some of our meeting left yet. Can we lump the compensation reports all together into one?
Certainly may.
I'll just cross them off, all three of them, but.
So the, a couple of these are required.
So a couple of these are required for us to post, and then they'll be posted on the website after. So one has administrator and teacher compensation, one is for IMRF employees that make their total compensation package is $75,000 or greater. And then a few years ago, the board wanted, didn't think that we should just show just those two groups, and so asked for a compensation report of all employees. So those are all attached in three separate items.
All right. Thank you. Okay, we have several action items to work through. So if we could, or the chair will entertain a motion to approve the adoption of the 2020-2021 budget as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Conover.
Yes.
Mr. Price.
Yes.
Ms. Hoover.
Yes.
Ms. Redonia.
Yes.
Ms. Coyle.
Yes.
Ms. Strohmeyer.
Yes.
Mr. Armstrong.
Yes.
Motion carries. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the transition to a hybrid model.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Price.
Yes.
Ms. Hoover.
Yes.
Mr. Redonia.
Yes.
Ms. Coyle.
Yes.
Ms. Strohmeyer.
Yes.
Mr. Armstrong.
Yes.
Ms. Conover.
Yes.
Okay. Board action on closed session minutes. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the board action on closed session minutes as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Hoover.
Yes.
Ms. Redonia.
Yes.
Ms. Coyle.
Yes.
Ms. Strohmeyer.
Yes.
Mr. Armstrong.
Yes.
Ms. Conover.
Yes.
Mr. Price.
Yes. Motion carries. Destruction of verbatim closed session minutes. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the destruction of the verbatim closed session minutes from October 9th, 2018 through March 19th, 2019.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Redonia.
Yes.
Ms. Coyle.
Yes.
Ms. Strohmeyer.
Yes.
Mr. Armstrong.
Yes.
Ms. Conover.
Yes.
Mr. Price.
Yes.
Ms. Hoover.
Yes.
Do we need any discussion on the other, these other two?
No, I mean, unless new board members, but I did talk to, about them a little bit during the budget presentation, both of these projects.
Okay. We'll do the motion then if anyone has questions. Approval of contract with Cashman-Stahler for plumbing projects related to the school maintenance project grant. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the architectural services contract with Cashman-Stahler Group for the plumbing projects associated with the school maintenance grant as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Are there any questions on this particular item? Roll call, please.
Ms. Coyle.
Yes.
Ms. Strohmeyer.
Yes.
Mr. Armstrong.
Yes.
Ms. Conover.
Yes.
Mr. Price.
Yes.
Ms. Hoover.
Yes.
Ms. Redonia.
Yes.
Approval of the contract with Cashman-Stahler for the building automation system at Westmont High School. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the contract with Cashman-Stahler for the building automation system at Westmont High School as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Any comments or questions? Roll call, please.
Ms. Strohmeyer.
Yes.
Mr. Armstrong.
Yes.
Ms. Conover.
Yes.
Mr. Price.
Yes.
Ms. Hoover.
Yes.
Ms. Redonia.
Yes.
Ms. Coyle.
Yes.
Motion carries. Approval of the purchase of John Deere tractor. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the John Deere tractor with attachments from Shorewood Home and Auto as the participating dealer in the amount of $55,173 as presented.
Can we discuss this before?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Strohmeyer.
Yes.
Mr. Armstrong.
Yes.
Ms. Conover.
Yes.
Mr. Price.
Yes.
Ms. Hoover.
Yes.
Ms. Redonia.
Yes.
Ms. Coyle.
Yes.
Motion carries. Superintendent's report.
So included in my report, this April 6th is a school board election, and our, because of the resignations we've had, our board will actually have five seats on the ballot. One, we have two-year term, and four, four-year terms. Anyone who is interested in running for the CSD 201 Board of Education, there's a link in board docs that they can use that'll take you to the election board site. The first day to circulate petitions is today, September 22nd, and then in order to be on the ballot on April 6th, 2021, you have to file your petitions between the dates of December 14th and December 21st, again, at the DuPage County Clerk's office. And this information will be on the website as well.
Any board reports this evening? Any public comment this evening? Future meetings and events, Westmont Fall College and Financial Aid Information Night, which is a virtual event, is September 30th, 7:30 to 8:30 p.m. Manning PTO meeting is October 5th at 7:00 p.m. Next school board meeting is October 13th at 7:00 p.m. We'll reconvene in closed session. The chair will entertain a motion to enter closed session to discuss personnel issues, collective bargaining, superintendent's evaluation, and to review closed session minutes. Yeah, but we did that already. Superintendent's evaluation, scratch the closed session minutes part. Motion?
So moved.
I was only going to say, second.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Mr. Armstrong.
Yes.
Ms. Conover.
Yes.
Mr. Price.
Yes.
Ms. Hoover.
Yes.
Ms. Redonia.
Yes.
Ms. Coyle.
Yes.
Ms. Strohmeyer.
Yes.
Okay. And there'll be no action items following closed.